Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Special Meeting of Thursday, December 15, 2016. If you haven't already done so, please take a moment to silence your devices. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you Chair Benami. Commissioner Erickson?
President Accountant forward one last time.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Hudes?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Vice Chair Kane?
Here.
And Chair Benami?
Here. Would everyone please stand and join Commissioner O'Donnell as he leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages participation in the public process with verbal and written comments. To speak on any item tonight, for which we only have one, please complete a speaker's card located within the bench, follow the instructions on the back of the card, and turn the card into a staff member. Matters relating to the North Forty will be heard during the itemized public hearing. Matters not on the agenda will be heard under verbal communications. We've received an addendum tonight, Exhibit Nine, and a desk item for Item Number Two. Have Commissioners had an opportunity to read the correspondence? Yes? Does anyone need -- no? No Charles Erickson? Okay. Anybody need more time? No. We don't have any requested continuances this evening, and we don't have any subcommittee reports. So even though we don't have any subcommittee reports, I'm going to make a report on the work of the General Plan Committee regarding the amendments to the North Forty specific plan. In meeting twice, Commissioner Hudes, as Chair, provided a very methodical and thorough approach to the issues at stake. Commissioner Erickson and Commissioner Hanson also provided extremely valuable input for the focus of this evening's discussion. So thank you, committee members, for making our job easier tonight. Verbal communications, I have one speaker card, and that would be from Angelia Dornar.
Hello, I'm Angelia Dornar, proud resident of the Almond Grove, and I just have a couple of comments very quickly. Compared to some, I'm somewhat of a newbie. I've only been a resident for a little shy of 20 years, and although I watched a little from afar in the past, I've only been actively participating in your meetings and the council meetings for a little shy of three years. But man, thanks to your deliberations, intense analysis and insights, and your agreements to disagree, a lot of which have come lately, I've learned an awful lot, among other things, policy versus practice, policy done above and practice having to be borne out by you all. EIRs, traffic studies, public works, design guidelines, architectural styles, articulation, and lately, there has been an awful lot of debates on numerous applications over size, and most importantly, compatibility with neighborhood and overall the town. All of these things combined, most of which are objective, is what results in the look and feel of Los Gatos. I knew what that meant almost 20 years ago after one afternoon driving around town, and I want to thank you for how seriously you take your role in preserving that for us and the future. Two nights ago, I attended a meeting regarding a developer's outreach meeting regarding proposed development at Highway Nine and Santa Cruz. Yes, the gateway, the first impression for all of our downtown and by right, our entire community. I believe we were told they would likely be starting the process with the town in early or late spring. I felt I and other residents would have plenty of time after the holidays to digest, analyze, critically review, and hopefully really become to embrace the entire project. Today, I found out it's actually already scheduled to come before you on January 17th. So it just means that my -- that me and a lot of other residents will need to get extremely busy after the new year to be sure that we can be here to help assist you in making sure that the architectural style, articulation, and compatibility with the neighbor -- neighborhood and our downtown are looked after for our benefit and that of the future. Thank you. Oh, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Dornar. Would anyone else like to speak to us about an item other than the North Forty? If so, please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, we'll go straight to the North Forty specific planned amendments, which is Item Number Two. Consideration of the General Plan Committee's discussion and provide recommendations regarding the Town Council's suggestions for amendments to the North Forty specific plan. Mr. Paulson and/or Ms. Sarnowitz, we're ready for the staff report, depending upon who's going to give it.
Sure, so I'll go through briefly. Obviously, in the staff report you received Friday, there was background, but I'll briefly go through that. Is everyone in this room, I'm sure, if not everyone, mostly everyone, is aware the council adopted the North Forty specific plan as it currently exists in June of 2015? In September of this year, the council considered the Phase One application for the North Forty, which was an actual development application. They denied that application on their September -- at September -- at their September 6th meeting, excuse me. Following that meeting, the mayor set a meeting to discuss potential amendments to the specific plan. The council held that meeting and forwarded a list of suggestions that was, as you mentioned earlier, discussed by the General Plan Committee on two occasions, one in October and one in November. The best exhibit to walk through those is probably Exhibit Nine in the addendum. The Exhibit Seven document that was provided in the staff report didn't have information on the general other category, which is the final category. The potential amendments, as staff had provided direction to council when they were discussing it, aren't intended to be a complete rewrite of the specific plan. They're intended to be specific. They're intended not to require additional environmental impact review, and also not to require modifications to our existing certified housing element. So with that, that concludes staff's report. We're available to help planning commissioners as they walk through this discussion, and ultimately, whether that's this evening or another occurrence, provide a recommendation to the council on these and any other items. When we get to the other category, there was, I know at least one, and fortunately, we do have three General Plan Committee members here, so in the other category, the General Plan Committee also discussed the potential for adding an assisted living, continuing of care, continuum of care use, and so that is not in your package, but we're available to discuss that and have a couple questions if we get that far, that we'll be looking for guidance from the commission on.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Questions for staff from Commissioners? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just saw this letter from Grovener et al. this evening dated December 12th. It's in the package we received tonight, and I've had a chance to scan it, but I've not had a chance to evaluate it. I will assume and hope that the staff, including the town attorney, has, because they seem to think that if we do what we're proposing, we would require additional -- or change in the environmental impact work, and I'm wondering where we are. It's going to be rather difficult for us to evaluate that without your advice, and also having just gotten it. It's a fairly -- it's a very significant comment, so I'm just wondering if either you or the town attorney have any comments concerning the issues raised in that letter.
Well, this issue also was brought up, I believe, in a letter that was provided the General Plan Committee from Grovener as well. So we will be looking at these different modifications, and I believe, if I remember correctly, it was, you know, potentially a traffic challenge. And so the EIR obviously studied a larger amount of commercial square footage. It also looked at a larger number of residential units, and so we would be weighing that against the changes. The changes that are before you this evening, we don't believe are going to have impacts in that direction. If anything, many of these suggestions actually lower some of those thresholds, but depending on the final outcome and Town Council's ultimate decision on any amendments, we would do a thorough walkthrough to make sure that we don't create any challenges for the town in the environmental impact report.
One more from Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yeah, just a follow-up. As I understand it, the specific plan now is in litigation, and at least the press reports that it might be argued in March. Whether it is or isn't, it's on the track to being argued. Were Summerhill and Grovener and Eden to prevail, they proceed under the existing specific plan, as I understand it. On the other hand, we are proceeding with some, I think, speed and diligence to change the specific plan, realizing it would only apply to a -- other parties, subsequent parties. What I'm wondering is, we seem to be proceeding, in my experience at least, somewhat rapidly, and I'm wondering what I'm missing, because one argument is, we're proceeding rapidly so somebody else can't come in and file under the existing specific plan, but that seems so fanciful, since that's -- if they were able to file under the existing specific plan, one would think perhaps we're on the wrong side of that battle in court. So is there any particular reason why we're proceeding with more speed than usual, or are we not proceeding with more speed than usual?
I'll give it a start, and then my colleagues will probably join me. We were fortunate in terms of working with the General Plan Committee and going through all of the suggestions in a very orderly way. We also heard public testimony at both of the meetings, so the committee had the full benefit of public input, and as you can see, the public is continuing to provide comment. As you work through Exhibit Nine in your packet, you'll see that there's still a lot of work to be done. So while we are at this point of starting to craft amendments to the specific plan, there's still a fair amount of work, and we'll see how far we get tonight, and then we'll continue our conversation. Applications can still be submitted, and they would be reviewed under the existing specific plan. There's no moratorium, you know, things can certainly proceed, so there's nothing -- this is really happening in parallel and independent of any lawsuit.
Except if someone were to file under the existing specific plan, they would be behind litigation, would they not? I mean, I assume, well, I don't know. You'd process another application under the existing specific plan, notwithstanding that we have litigation on that same specific plan. Is that what you're worried about?
Well, we have multiple properties, as you know, so the application that's currently in litigation was for the southern portion. There are many other properties to the north, and whether it's a small parcel or a combination of parcels, those are still eligible for new uses and new development. And so under that scenario, the current specific plan prevails.
Thank you.
And there's no legal deadline that we're doing. I think part of it was just the priority from council to undertake this task, knowing how important is the community and the amount of input they received to, you know, put this forward in front of the General Plan Committee, and they did it, but there isn't any set date that Planning Commission has to be done or when the council does.
So there's no date, for example, when the council is tentatively going to take this matter up?
So we tentatively outlined a timeline, which was January 17th. However, we always knew that was tentative, and that assumed a only one General Plan Committee meeting and only one Planning Commission meeting, which we also knew maybe not be -- may not be -- may not work from the, you know, just the sheer breadth of information.
So that tentative schedule would have the Town Council a meeting on the 17th?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Vice Chair Kane?
I have two questions. The first is, is it true that the only difference between Exhibit Seven and Exhibit Nine is the text where "should" has been changed to "shall"?
The change is in the last two pages in the general other category. Previously, in Exhibit Seven, it said that further information would be coming forward, and so that, in combination with the two attachments, one being the occurrences of "should," and the other being the tree protection ordinance, which was a request of the General Plan Committee.
So we should be guided by Exhibit Nine?
Correct.
Thank you. The second question is, obviously, we received another letter from Grovener regarding discrimination based on age, and they cited a number of cases of apparent alleged discrimination on families with children. And that, not being an attorney, Tom, and that got my attention, because we have, the General Plan Committee, and myself and others in this body, have talked about senior housing spread out and at ground level as opposed to in elevated towers. Should we be concerned about that letter, or are we on firm ground by requesting senior housing, BMPs, be spread out and be on ground level?
You should be concerned with the letter. The letter states what the law is in regard to discrimination, but there is no requirement from a legal standpoint that says you can't dictate how your senior housing is going to be built. You also have to understand the ramifications, though, of putting that requirement in, and the realistic expectations, which I said to GPC, is that you won't get senior housing if you're looking for senior housing on ground floor.
So despite the letter, it may not be that senior housing is spread out?
I don't believe the letter. I'm trying to -- I only saw the last one with this package, so it must have been the previous one, but they were just talking in generality about discrimination and the requirements of senior housing. You can't specifically require senior housing, but if senior housing is an element they want to do, you can spell out how that senior housing is going to be done. So discrimination meaning designating specifically that there will be senior housing? Yes, you cannot do that.
And I think the letter pointed out that there were cases exactly like that.
And we didn't do that in the first one, and we're not doing that requirement now. I think what you were alluding to is that if an applicant does want to do senior housing, then putting a requirement that it has to be on ground floor, it has to be spread out, the ramifications of that in the real world is you won't get senior housing, because that's not how it can function either legally, because of the amenities all having to be together, or because land's too valuable.
I didn't look at it that way. You're saying despite all the conversation and the merits to putting seniors on ground floors opposed to up in towers dependent upon elevators, that's probably not going to happen?
Unless you subsidize it or do something else.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson, followed by Commissioner Hudes?
I just wanted to add a comment since we were on the General Plan Committee. We discussed this issue at length, and my recollection of the conclusion we came to is that we wouldn't be requesting age-specific housing, but what we were going to try to do instead to accommodate the needs of our seniors was to make sure that we were clear on what kinds of features that they would want in housing if they were to do stepped-on housing, and make sure that we accommodated for that in the specific plan.
Commissioner Hudes?
This was a question, I think it was asked and answered, at the General Plan Committee, but I wanted to ask it again in this context, and it's about the situation we're in, where the town, I believe, is being sued by the applicant. And so any deliberations that we have or any changes that we make to the specific plan, can those affect that litigation? And would you advise anything in the way we would treat that particular event in regards to our consideration?
And again, that's -- I'm glad you raised the question again, and because it's come up even from council and from the General Plan Committee in here, is anything that we're doing right now cannot affect that litigation whatsoever. The administrative record is done and complete, and it finished on September 6th when the resolution was submitted, so that's everything that was the decision-making in that project, and anything that's -- any hearings from this point forward are not part of the administrative record and will not be introduced into evidence.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we will now invite comments from members of the public. I have a few speaker cards, and I will start with Roy Moses.
Good evening, councilmembers. Roy Moses. La Croix Court, I almost forgot where I live. Haven't been home in a while. Just wanted to come tonight and say thank you very much for all the work that you're doing. I know this is an arduous task on your behalf. We, the citizens, have been meeting as well and trying to keep up on what we have put forth to you in past meetings and that, and then we didn't -- unfortunately, we weren't able to get the document, at least that was the number, what is it, seven was the one that came out? Anyway, I read that tonight for about two hours. I've been busy with other things like family matters and that, but anyway, I just want to say that obviously by that document, you have addressed a lot of the issues that we brought up in those meetings and things like that, and listening tonight, I'm starting to become a little bit more encouraged that we're moving forward. It's very difficult as a citizen to sit back and without going through all the records on a continuous basis and reading every document that comes to us, to really keep up with all these things. It's confusing, and the laws are pretty hard to figure out, but I just want to say thank you to everybody for being diligent in what you're doing. The citizens are aware, even though they're not here tonight, obviously it's the holidays and with school, the rain and everything, but I just want you to know that I speak to a lot of people every day in my business, in the community. I've been here for a long time, and they're aware that of keeping an eye on all of us, and they're asking us, the people that are involved, and we're trying to get them more involved, to really keep on task and move forward. Just want to make sure I just say the couple of things I wanted to say here tonight. I think the only other thing I would like to say in talking with a lot of people, and I know that there's several other development projects coming up, the one on Highway Nine, the one on Alberta Way, some housing, other housing projects. I don't know if things are just really kind of going to get away from us in this town with all these projects coming up. We have one on High Little Court that's been a big issue, and I'm not sure if we, the citizenry or the town government, is going to be able to handle all this and be able to maintain what this town is. So I'd like to just say that I'm -- I would like to suggest that I'm in support of having a moratorium on building in this town for two years to get everything all sorted out. Traffic issues are not going to go away. School issues are not going to go away impacted by all this development, and the general welfare of the living that we have here in this town's not going to go away. So I'd like to put that on the table for consideration, and a lot of the citizens are talking about that. Thank you for your time. Have a great holiday. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moses.
Thank you, Commissioners. Happy holidays. My name is Rod Teague, and I've been a resident here most of my life. Please prioritize the following amendments in order to safeguard the specific plan's true intent and leave no gray areas to be manipulated. The first one is spread housing out evenly through all districts, which you've heard. This is a clear intent of the specific plan, and it needs to be solidified and protected. The second is reduce commercial to a maximum of 225,000 square feet. This would be approximately five times the size of Trader Joe's Village Square. This is in addition to the commercial that already exists there and would be more than adequate to serve the north end residents and all adjacent communities. Considering the new retail, online purchasing paradigm, competition between the North Forty and downtown is not a good thing. I agree competition is good within the downtown itself, but we do not want to fragment or confuse our downtown core. San Jose made that mistake. Why would we ever want to take that chance? We want to foster our downtown success because that's who we really are. Also, because there has never been a proposal on that North Forty, it's completely within the town's justifiable right to make this reduction now. Number three, make housing affordable to early-career professionals. We've been talking about millennials, but millennials are now requiring larger homes. This can be achieved by mandating unit-size caps. Offer housing that works with the median income for Los Gatos, which is $122,000. It's a great benchmark to make units attainable. Based on the median income for Los Gatos, early-career professionals might be able to afford a unit that is priced at $750,000. That is, if they have $150,000 to put down. Gives you an idea what they would have to come up with. That would translate into 100 or 1,000-square-foot units or $750 a square foot. This is obviously doesn't -- this number doesn't include revolving debt and for qualifying, so it would be hard-pressed to even qualify for a $750,000 home with an income of $122,000. At least 33% of the total market price units in the development should fall into this category. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Teague, I have a question for you. So with your proposal to reduce the commercial to 225,000 square feet, does that include any consideration for a hotel? And could you give me your thoughts on having a separate square footage allotment for a hotel?
I mean, if that was a consideration, yeah, I think that's very viable, but when we're talking about retail, retail space, I think we need to be extremely critical. You know, that competition for downtown business in this retail environment is really scary, especially, you know, I just read in Los Gatos Weekly that this last quarter, I think we were down by another 4% in retail sales, so that seems to be the continuing trend, and adding large retail malls is really a bad choice, at least in my opinion.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson, followed by Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you for your comments. On the affordable housing for the early-career professionals, I think that makes a lot of sense. You talked about the affordability of owner-owned units. One issue that the General Plan Committee discussed, and we didn't completely resolve it, was there's nothing in the general plan that speaks to having rental units, and of course, those would likely be more affordable, that combined with reducing the unit size. So I'm wondering what your opinion is on that in terms of making housing affordable for young professionals living in Los Gatos?
Through rentals? I think if -- I think the young professional would prefer to have a place of ownership, but, you know, that's definitely an option, I think, a very viable option, but I think it's the size, you know, that's associated with that, and having gone to so many meetings and listening about the sell on the millennial makeup of the development, I don't see that moving forward. I would like to see that, and I think that should be comprised of a third of the total development.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hudes?
Again, with regard to affordable for early-career professionals, you mentioned a unit-size cap. There have been some suggestions from the council of 1,700-square-foot cap, and the General Plan Committee, I believe, came up with a 1,500-square-foot cap. Do you have any information that would support whether, you know, either of those two numbers would be appropriate for this purpose or other numbers?
I just don't think it pencils out. I mean, I think the average price for square footage for a new home in Los Gatos is about $850 a square foot now, so it's -- and I'm kind of going based on borrowing power of somebody that is maybe in their early 30s and is looking to purchase a home in Los Gatos. A realistic buying power level, I think, is probably about $750,000 if you're making that $122,000 a year, so if, you know, if there's 1,500-square-foot homes for sale for $750,000, then great, but I just don't think that's realistic.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teague.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bill Hirschman.
Next speaker is Bill Hirschman.
Good evening. My name is Bill Hirschman. I am one of the small property owners in the North Forty, was part of the previous application, just making that disclosure. But I'm here really tonight as a citizen, 33-year citizen of Los Gatos, 33-year development developer in this town. Many of the projects that I've built in the past, the town now refers to as the look-and-feel of Los Gatos. So I'm very familiar with the process in this town. I spent about three hours this afternoon preparing some statements, and unfortunately, Mr. O'Donnell took them all away in a two-minute discussion. I think you nailed the question. Why are we moving this in this expedient fashion? There's no reason. I've spent 19 years, since I bought my property in 1998, and I've spent 19 years waiting for decisions in the North Forty. Most recently, six years as part of that application. We spent, I think there were 17 meetings to talk about the specific plan. There was a year and a half worth of meetings. And now, all of a sudden, in three months, we're pushing amendments through not knowing what's going to happen with the litigation. I'm going to offer up an answer for your question. There is no reason to be doing this. There's no solid reason to be expediting this process. There just simply isn't. And if there is, I would like a response to that question. If there's a reason, if there's another pending application, if there's a reason to push this forward in a manner, I mean, this room was filled with hundreds of people when we were here the last few times. The gentleman that spoke before me saying, "Well, it's Christmas." I mean, who shows up at Planning Commission meetings at Christmas? Only crazy people like us. I mean, that's the only people that do that. So why are we, why are we doing this? What is the need? I'm going to jump because I only got my minute and a half here. But the question that also came up, and I can't remember who brought it up, with regards to the traffic and changing some of these recommendations and how they don't impact CEQA, I've been doing this a really long time. And I will tell you that changing uses and changing traffic patterns as a result of various uses will absolutely impact traffic patterns and traffic reports. There is no doubt. I have other comments. I'm running out of time. But my only other one is with regards to the CUPs. Before you start requiring CUPs in a project of this magnitude, you better be prepared to process those CUPs. When you get hit, as what will happen with 20 or 25 CUPs, and that's the way this process will work to lease these spaces, the town's not going to be able to handle that. And I haven't heard a response as to how that would take place. Have other comments, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschman. Don't go away. We have a question for you from Commissioner Hudes.
Thank you. I appreciate your perspective very much. You were really asking two questions about why we're doing this. Why are we moving so quickly? And why are we doing this at all? With regard to the why are we doing this at all, you know, we had testimony from many people at the Planning Commission. I mean, are you aware that there were 500 individual comments and that only 3% supported the application?
I'm not aware of that. I don't have those statistics. I'm accepting that that's what you said. However, in this latest process, have, and I'd be open to hear your response, have you heard one single comment in your last go-around of this review that you haven't heard for the last six years? What's changed? Is there a single comment that would lead you to change your decisions that were discussed, that were voted on, and went in the direction that you decided to go? I would suggest that that's not the case. I would suggest that there's agendas that people that wanted it to be directed in one direction have now, those decisions didn't go in that manner, and so now there's another bite of the apple.
Yeah, I appreciate your response, and I don't think it's appropriate to get into a debate. But I do appreciate your response and your perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschman. Edward Morimoto?
Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Ed Morimoto, and I live at 460 Monterey Avenue. As my remarks to the Town Council and the General Plan Committee on amending the specific plan or a matter of public record, I'll try to be brief, as I trust you all have or will review those proceedings as part of your decision-making process. In that spirit, I'd just like to punctuate two points. I'd like to reiterate my concerns of the hasty nature of this amendment process, both with regards to its timing ahead of knowing the outcome of the pending Phase I lawsuit and the rush to make changes with extremely limited due diligence. Even with the benefit of time, resources, and funding for study, the complexity of the North Forty specific plan was extremely challenging. And these proceedings are predicated on a notion that despite those luxuries, the plan was flawed. So I'd ask you to consider, can responsible decisions be made on elements like residential allowances, given the wildly different contexts in which they will be applied, depending on the outcome of the lawsuit? I would also ask you to remember the remorse felt by many, including those who made the decision for the loss of the originally proposed senior moved-down building caused by the simple, but perhaps underconsidered reduction in building heights made by the Town Council in the final stages of the specific plan hearings. I would be the first to agree the specific plan isn't perfect, but creating it and even amending it is a complicated endeavor that I believe requires greater investment than is being given here. I would also ask that this committee proceed cautiously on further commercial restrictions for the North Forty in the name of protecting our downtown. There are multiple studies indicating the commercial allowed in the North Forty specific plan doesn't spell doom for our downtown, but not a single one that indicates that it does. But if our downtown is vulnerable, as it may be, I fail to see how restricting the North Forty makes it less so. Shoppers and diners don't even slow down crossing town limits, but sales tax revenue comes to a full stop. At last week's Town Council, it was made clear in the quarterly financial report that Los Gatos faces declines in sales tax revenue when the state broadly and the West Valley specifically are seeing the opposite. Limited data and Netflix impacts may have allowed us to miss this before, but the message is all too clear now. Now, my background is in business, not municipal economic vitality, but I believe the same basic economic laws apply. I have yet to experience a situation where the answer to helping a struggling part of a business requiring investment was to make another part of that business less competitive. So I have a hard time understanding how making the North Forty less competitive and likely bring in less tax revenue to our town will help address the parking, traffic, and other issues requiring investment needed to help our downtown. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and as always, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Morimoto. Questions? See none. Thank you very much. Ann Robinson?
As you know, I've addressed this concern before, and I appreciate you listening again. This is the North Forty. The area in orange is the high health-risk area of the North Forty where the last, the current application that's in the lawsuit is proposing housing in that area. I handed out the EIR for this area, and in the air quality section of the EIR, it states, however, residential uses could be placed within areas with toxic air contaminants in excess of standards. This is a significant impact, environmental impact. Implementation of the following mitigation measures would reduce toxic air contaminants, health risks to the less-than-significant level. And then it goes on to mitigation levels, mitigation measures, which you have, which I've handed out. And it talks about high-efficiency filtration on ventilation systems shall be required in residential hotel and office units located in areas along Route, State Route 17 identified in the EIR as having a cancer risk in excess of 10 cases per million. I still don't get how this is going to be effective for residential uses, considering that the windows will be open. I don't see how this mitigation measure will be effective. If, the other article I handed out to you, which is called "What is a Safe Distance to Live or Work Near High Auto-Emission Roads?", which is the article I handed you, which consolidates a lot of the research on the Internet, and on page four, it says, "On average, particulate matter concentration is significantly higher within 330 feet or 100 meters of major highways than it is further away." So basically, it's saying that anything within 330 feet or 100 meters is going to have a higher toxic contaminant of particulate matter. So my question is to you, is why are we allowing housing when we have 40 acres in this area? I don't understand that. I lived 30 feet from a freeway my entire life. My mom died of lung cancer. It was horrible. It was dirty. It was loud. Why would we want to subject our people, our future residents, to that? I just, I don't understand. So what I'm asking is that you, in section, let's see, section 2.7.4 in the setbacks for residential, that you add a requirement that the residential housing must be 330 feet from the State Route 17 boundary, that you seriously consider this. I think it's important for you to address this issue. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
And thank you for your time.
Commissioner Hudes, followed by Vice Chair Kane.
Thank you. And I appreciate your sending the articles. I'm not sure I completely absorbed all of it, but how is the 330 feet the right setback? I saw one article that said 1,000 feet. I saw another article that said there was a certain kind of damage within certain ranges. Why 330 feet?
Well, I think the research on the Internet that I've read, it's an average, right? For, of course, this, you know, this is eight lanes of freeway. I mean, most of Los Gatos is four. This has a major interchange. This has a lot of other, I guess, impacts that some other areas don't. So again, the 330 feet is an average. I mean, why are schools required to be 500 feet from major freeways? You know, because there's less pollution 500 feet away. I think the 330 feet, 100 meters, was just an average from what was taken as far as measurements from other studies that were done. But I think what concerns me is this is eight lanes. This is a major interchange. These are off-ramps, on-ramps. There's gridlock there hours every day. I mean, I just don't think, I don't understand why we put housing here. I don't get it.
Thank you.
Any further questions? See none. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. David Weisman?
I just wanted to second the, in Exhibit Seven, page 15, there's a suggestion regarding the definition of open space and green space. And I just want to say that I think, following the, I guess this is staff's research, where they found, the EPA in New England defines open space as green space, schoolyards, playgrounds, public seating areas, public plazas, and vacant lots. I think that is a much better definition of open space than was done in the first version where streets and sidewalks counted as open space.
Questions for Mr. Weisman?
Just a clarification. It goes to what I asked earlier. You're referencing Exhibit Seven, and I'm assuming it's the same as Exhibit Nine, which is the authoritative exhibit that we're using for examination of changes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mike. I don't have, it says at the top, "Suggestions," page 15, and I believe that's from Exhibit Seven.
And I would believe that Exhibit Nine is the same. I just wanted to...
He probably didn't get Exhibit Nine because we got it as an addendum. It's...
Well, that's not, that's not fair.
I agree.
I'm sure he's referring to the same thing that we're looking at in Exhibit Nine. So thank you very much. Any questions? See none? Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Sam Weidman?
My name is Sam Weidman. I've been, between my wife and myself, we have over 120 years in the town of Los Gatos. We have seen, yes, I've had 70 myself. So anyway, we've seen a lot of changes. I think most of you probably remember, we put up over, I think, 70 slides showing the look-and-feel of what we felt was the look-and-feel of Los Gatos. I never really got a chance to really summarize what that was really all about, but this afternoon I happened to read, go in on the website and read Exhibit 10, which had the desktop items also in it. And I happened to read the one from Leonard Pacheco, and I think he quite succinctly, if you want, summarized what we were trying to get at. And this is based under the benchmarks for what constitutes design excellence for the North Forty development committed and dressed by the specific plan. And Item Two he had there was "Avoid the Overuse of Concrete, Sleek Steel, and Glass Boxes Particularly in the Central Area." I think the one thing you'll find with the look-and-feel of Los Gatos, you don't see a lot of concrete, steel, and glass windows, large glass windows, large glass facades on them. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weidman. Sandy Decker?
I would simply like to say thank you, especially to you as planning commissioners. You listen to this community, and I want to thank you for supporting our concerns on the impacts of this development. This is a huge tract of land. You supported and participated in the specific plan amendment process, making us all hopeful that we will see what the guiding principles of the specific plan was set to do. And of course, that's to make this something that Los Gatos can be very, very proud of because, in fact, it does enhance the town of Los Gatos. Staff, this is a marvelous document. You captured the community's comments, and now we must be sure that this document does come to fruition. Specifically, again, I would like to see you address the amendments without the repetition and the rewrite that you have in this particular document. And you did it because there were several things that were repetitive, so you had to answer the same question again. But I did find it a little bit confusing, and I don't know about you, planning commissioners, but it was a little difficult to make sure exactly what it was in some cases, that the decisions were or what you were, in fact, suggesting. And I don't know that you're suggesting, you're simply listening and putting forward to this body what the community was looking for. But I would really like to make it clear that what we're looking for is a decision going in that direction and not more confusion. On the last page of Exhibit Seven, there are seven general comments which have not been really, I don't, I don't think they've been addressed for the public, and they are the ones where we talk about shoulds and shalls. And yes, there was something that was going to be provided on Monday, December 12th, and I'm sorry, I cannot find it anywhere. But these seven things were apparently either talked about or addressed. So I'll have to look further, but I'd like, maybe at some point, somebody could tell me where they are. Things like underground parking was kind of glazed over. Several of the things were mentioned, but didn't feel like it gave this body an opportunity to really make a viable decision, if you will, if that's the process we're looking for. So anyway, I do thank you. I think you did yeoman... I think you did yeoman service on this particular document. I hope it gives you, planning commissioners, what you need in order to make this work for the community, because you've certainly done the work we needed so far.
Thank you, Ms. Decker. Question for you, Ms. Decker. Don't go away. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Really, not a question. Hopefully, it will be helpful. If you look at Exhibit, I guess that's A, which is a multi-page discussion of should, and you said you didn't see that, so I'm suggesting that if you look at that, that will help you to decide whether it's...
Now, Tom, was that to you as, as part of this?
We got this, I believe we got this yesterday.
It was an addendum, but I don't believe the public received the addendum.
I don't think we received it, Tom.
Because I consider the hottest thing something we got today, so this is an old one. We got it yesterday. Anyway, if you look at, if you look at that, it does address your questions, and you can see whether it does it adequately.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Decker, Exhibit 9 is online, so you can look it up online.
We've got Exhibit 9, believe me, but it's, it's finding, you know, the various, the various, the last page you're saying is there? We've got 7, and 9 is online?
So I'll try to clear this up. So Friday, when the staff report went out, staff did not have time to get to the general other category. So we provided them with as much information as we had at that point. And the staff report stated that on Monday, we would prepare the rest of those categories, and that is included in Exhibit 9, which includes two attachments. One, Commissioner O'Donnell was referencing, was all the instances where should is used in the specific plan, which is Exhibit A to Exhibit 9. And then Exhibit B, the General Plan Committee had requested the tree protection ordinance. So that also was included in Exhibit 9, which is in the addendum.
And that came out on Monday?
Correct.
Okay. And again, you know, I'm afraid getting through our website sometimes is a little bit difficult, so I'll go back again. Please forgive me. Mary, thank you. Thank you. And did you have a question? Mr. Kane?
When you appeared before the GPC on October 27, you were also talking about some confusion. And then I got confused as to what, what is your preference on the spread out of the homes? If the number of homes to be built is X, do you want those spread out over all three parcels? Or what?
Well, thank you for bringing that up, because it's one of the things that I commend, staff, on picking up on where we were going as a suggestion, which was a percentage. And if you look through this, they are, or they do, talk about the option of doing a percentage of housing through each zone. And then they follow up, of course, by allowing it in the tables. So to me, that's this community. It's, it's the opportunity to feel like this is an additional neighborhood in this community.
So that is your preference?
Very definitely.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Decker, can you give me your thoughts on the commercial, a reduction in the square footage and separating out for a hotel? Can you give me your thoughts for a hotel?
Yes, I have many thoughts for a hotel. In fact, I've been talking every time I go on a trip, and there's a wonderful boutique hotel that looks just like Los Gatos. I walk right up to the manager and ask if I can talk to anybody who could make a decision about moving one of their hotels to our town. But you know that I feel like we should be doing more outreach anyway. There's some terrific opportunities. The world of hotel is not what we think about anymore, as this huge, huge monolith in the middle of San Francisco or Dubai. There's some real opportunities here to embrace a wonderful design for a hotel. It doesn't cut the cost by any means because it's smaller. We all have been to boutique hotels, and we know that they're costly. So we're looking for, we're desperately looking for revenue. And triple occupancy tax is something that we have already approved and want to use as our revenue stream. Well, as far as I'm concerned, I think it should be there. I would like to see if we do, and hopefully we do, spread the housing. I'd like to see small, a neighborhood-serving commercial, you know, spread throughout the whole, you know, the whole complex. I think that would be something that we see already, you know, we really do. So...
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Markeen Smith?
I live on Drake's Bay Avenue. I'm Markeen Smith, and I'm, that's near the North Forty. And so I've spoken at some of the meetings, and to summarize why we're doing this now, we all know it's because in the last 10 or 15 years, things have changed a lot. We have a much larger population. The housing crisis is worse than ever before. Retail has gone, if you read the Wall Street Journal, it's gone online almost exclusively, to the point where, and it's, it's actually great, because in my neighborhood, Amazon, Costco, FedEx, UPS, the US Mail, come at all times of the day and night, including Saturdays and Sundays, and they're, they're doing all the packages at once. And so it's saving, when they're coming with their 30 or 40 packages from my neighborhood for various houses, they're saving 30 or 40 car trips, and it's a great thing. And so to capture the leakage, we're going to have to go online or start a hotel. And the hotel is a perfect thing because you could see the hills from there. It's beautiful. There's a lot of, in my neighborhood, there's all the medical centers that have gone in, and people are getting cancer treatments, and they're there for all kinds of reasons. And hospice is down the way. And family members come, and it would be really convenient to, and during the holidays, certainly, but it would be really convenient to have boutique hotels that were in that area for the residents, local people and our families, and for people who come to the various medical facilities. And I wanted to double up on Ann Robinson's thing about, because I've always, also with the trees, I lived in Hollywood, in Los Angeles, for, before I came to Los Gatos, like 30 years ago. And in Los Gatos, in Hollywood, in Los Angeles, they won't even allow buildings anymore. The distance from the freeway that are, if they're residential, they cannot be that close to the freeway anymore. They're called black lung lofts because people do get lung cancer. They get asthma, allergies, they have more miscarriages. And so my suggestion, and I put slides up at another meeting, but is to have the trees at least 100 feet tree court, or large tree court, or to block, to take some of that pollution up, because trees will suck it, and 300 foot is what would be optimal. But that, I'm a master gardener too, and trees, we've done it since Earth Day in 1960s, and it's because it's, it's climate change and it works. So that's it, so.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. No questions. Thank you. Shannon Susick? This is our last card, by the way.
Thank you so much for the time, and I'm going to double up on Sandy Decker's thank you, because this is, although you can't tell because it's rainy and it's before the holidays, this is a great night for our town. And thank you all for your time and energy. And I apologize if you've seen this before, because I did present part of this to the town council. Maybe in the holiday spirit, it's kind of like It's a Wonderful Life. You've seen it again, a movie you can see over and over and over again. So I don't think it's been mentioned, and I apologize for being late to the meeting, but, oopsie. I'm, I believe that Commissioner Hudes mentioned that out of all the correspondence that you guys received, I think the number one issue was traffics. T- t- traffic.
This is exactly what happened the last time I watched It's a Wonderful Life.
I think this is what happened when I did this before with you, right? You had to, let's see. What do I point it at? The screen? Okay. Just please put something in the revised specific plan. Please put some language in there regarding traffic. That's okay, you guys. That's all right. Oh. I, I would sing, but everyone would leave. So what do you guys want to talk about? Does anyone want to know what I'm doing, Christmas Day or Christmas Eve?
We talked about that today.
Tell us. You have more than three minutes. Well, I want to go to the Raiders game, Christmas Eve, but my family's kind of put a kibosh on that. They feel that I might come home not capable of really being fun for Christmas Eve. Christmas Day, we go to a movie at the Los Gatos Theater, and then we have Cracked Crab. Anyone else care to join in? I buy it at the market in Cupertino Live, which is always fun, and then we steam it. It's really yummy. Okay. Okay. So I'm going to pretend like I remember what was on that PowerPoint. And my main point is that I would ask, on behalf of this community, that some language be put in the specific plan regarding traffic studies. I know that it's costly, costs the town, but I believe as that is the number one issue. There's only one small smidgen in that specific plan, and it's that we, if there is a significant change within the development, it will trigger a new traffic study. And I think in this time and space, and with the projects at Good Samaritan and other projects planned, that it's really vital. Oh, there we go. Oh, do you want to do it? Does the thing work? Just keep going.
And just for the commission's reference, the slides are in the desk item.
Yes, we have it as Exhibit 15.
Oh, see, I kind of, I kind of spoiled it. I already told you what the T stood for. Traffic. Keep going. Oh, you can just scroll through them. There's nothing, there's no new, great information. I just thought that this might be kind of fun. Yeah, just keep going. You just keep going. Please include traffic mandates in the revised specific plan. That is not on any of the lists that I saw, and we obviously have an issue with it. I've talked a lot with the staff and learned a lot about traffic studies, but I think that regardless, this is a major issue for everyone here. Just, it's all right. It's, there's nothing really that everybody hasn't seen before.
Ms. Susick?
Yes.
The entire presentation is included in our, in our report.
But isn't this more fun?
Well, I got, I got what T stood for, so I was ahead of it.
Me up here fumbling around? Okay. Oh, and that is one issue, and we were talking about that today, that we are possibly losing our VTA service in town. No community bus any longer. And unfortunately, most of the people still drive cars. They don't ride bikes here. The Samaritan Master Plan is a net increase of 365,000 square feet of medical space. They're finally holding their, they finally have the draft EIR out and are holding meetings on it. That has a significant impact. Hey, you can keep going. That's, the pictures are not that great. There we go. T should stand for our town, not traffic. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Susick. Questions? Seeing none. I have one more speaker card coming.
Lee Quintana, Five Palm Avenue. I'd just like to reiterate what some of the speakers earlier said about what's the rush. I submitted an email to town, I didn't mean it to be included in the packet, but it was, about Mountain View and their, what they call their specific area plan, or something like that, for the north Bay Shore area. They approved that two years ago, and then they immediately, at the meeting, I believe that they approved it, they initiated an amendment process that they anticipated taking two years. I also included it because I felt that if you read it, it is so much easier to understand. It's organized very well, in a manner that doesn't make it repetitive and hard to understand, as Sandy Decker was talking about. So that's one thing I wanted to say. I asked you, please, to ask the council to postpone further consideration of this until we know what's happening with the lawsuit, because otherwise, you may approve something that, when the lawsuit is settled, we'll have to come back for another amendment because it doesn't, no longer fits with what has come out of the lawsuit. Secondly, on the CUPs, I understand that the downtown wants to be on a level playing field with the North Forty, and therefore, they've asked for the North Forty to have CUPs. But at the same time, they're also asking to take away CUPs from the downtown. So it doesn't make sense to me to consider one without considering the other. That seems like a separate question that should be answered all at one time, not only for the downtown, the North Forty, but all the businesses in town. And then, thirdly, I thought the suggestion about more affordable housing for the millennials or for whoever only makes $125,000 is, you know, I'm all for smaller houses and less expensive houses. But if you consider that for the North Forty as a mandate, why not spread that out to the rest of the town and require all-new housing to fit that same criteria as an effort of fairness? I don't think you can do that. I don't think you should do it in the North Forty. I know you can't do it elsewhere. But, hey, I'm, I'm not a development proponent or anything like that, but I do think that fair is fair, and we need to have a level playing field on fairness. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quintana. Diane Drier?
Diane Drier, Arroyo Grande Way, which is pretty close to the North Forty. And first of all, I'd like to thank you all for your hard work on this measure. And also congratulate a lot of my fellow town citizens for the incredible work that they've done in terms of research on housing, toxic pollution close to freeways, the need for open space, the look and feel of Los Gatos, the possibility of boutique hotels, traffic studies, and many more things. And I plead guilty to, speaking on the subject of shoulds and shalls, being the English professor in the room. I realize that there's been some concern about rushing through this, but I don't see it as rushing. I see it as a very focused, committed, concerted effort by a lot of very dedicated town citizens who have managed to perform yeoman's duty in terms of research. Therefore, like our constitution said, in order to form a more perfect union, I would commend my neighbors... I realize that there's been some concern about rushing through this, but I don't see it as rushing. I see it as a very focused, committed, concerted effort by a lot of very dedicated town citizens who have managed to perform yeoman's duty in terms of research. Therefore, like our constitution said, in order to form a more perfect union, I would commend my neighbors and all of you for working together to form a more perfect specific plan for our future in Los Gatos. Thank you very much and happy holidays.
Thank you, Ms. Drier. I have no further speaker cards unless somebody would like to come forward at this time. See no one come forward. Mr. Paulson, would you like to add any comments before I close the public testimony portion of the hearing?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. I will now close the public portion of the public hearing. To stay focused in our discussion this evening, Exhibit Nine will provide the basis for our deliberation as we proceed numerically through the following categories: residential, commercial, open space, parking, height, and general/other. So starting with Exhibit Nine with residential, do any of the commissioners have any comments? Commissioner Hanson.
Item one was one that the staff flagged as a concern and we also discussed it in the General Plan Committee. The suggestion was in the Lark perimeter overlay zone, we should set a maximum density of eight units per acre. And I don't know if all the commissioners had a chance to read the verbatim minutes, but the reason that that came up was there was a general feeling that, well, the cottage cluster units were completely ignored in the Phase One application simply because they can't, they generally couldn't be built at the density of 20 dwelling units per acre. And so, you know, there was a feeling that we really should have that kind of housing in the North Forty to meet the unmet needs of the community. And so there was a question about doing that. So I had some questions, but a comment that I wanted to make relative to staff's comment is one thing we absolutely don't want to do that staff flagged is we don't want to revise the housing element because it's already been certified by the state. That's a place that we really, really don't want to go. But in the interest of trying to accommodate the needs of the community, one thing I wondered is we're sort of in a, I don't know if I would call it a box, but the cap on units of 270 translates exactly to 13.5 acres at 20 dwelling units per acre. And so if you put something else in there that's eight units per acre, then you don't have the ability to meet the requirement for the 13.5 at 20 dwelling units per acre unless you increase the cap on the number of units. So that's an issue, that's a big issue to consider. One thing that I didn't see in this report that we discussed in the General Plan Committee that I wondered about was, and I think Mayor Sayak brought it up, was about averaging. So if we have, say, X acres that are eight dwelling units per acre and you have other ones that are, say, 20 or 30, 25 or 30 dwelling units per acre, is it possible from the state's perspective to average that to, that out to 20? And I don't know if we knew the answer to that.
Yeah, no. I haven't seen that used and I'd like to start the apologies right off the bat. So where it says the housing element needs to be revised, actually, we can just make an amendment to the general plan. But what that does mean is that that number would have to increase by however many units are built at 20 units per acre, then we could still preserve the language in our housing element. I don't know. I haven't seen the state allow that type of averaging. There is an opportunity where, you know, you may have a situation where someone builds at eight units per acre and then you have a higher density as you suggest. It wouldn't be averaged unless it's part of one project. So I guess that would be the question. If we average it across the entire, that piece of property, then it could be averaged. But, you know, to offset the eight, you're going to have to be pretty high. You're going to have to be at least, I don't know what Matthew probably has in top of his head.
Yes, and he has his hand up, so I know he's anxious to talk.
I do recall a slightly different answer in the General Plan Committee because I don't think it's evaluated one acre at a time. So you don't have to have 20 units on this acre and 20 units on this acre.
That's correct. And so that's why I was trying to clarify. You could do an average if it's part of one project, but if something came in, just let's hypothetically, just for that area of the Lark District and it was just eight units per acre, that's where we run into this challenge.
Right. So if it were eight units per acre on one acre, then you'd have to make up the difference maybe across several other acres. So not on a one-for-one, that you have to find one other acre where you have to make it up. But it could be, in my understanding, spread across what is considered residential zoning. Is that correct?
That is correct. The challenge is obviously with multiple property owners and the ability to come in with a smaller project, if it doesn't come in as part of a larger project, then you may run into the issue. So we do need to provide some flexibility in that instance to allow for more units should that occur. And so maybe that was, I didn't go as in-depth in that piece.
Do we know, if I could follow up, how many acres are involved in this perimeter overlay zone?
We did a rough calculation and it's probably somewhere around an acre.
One acre, okay.
Approximately.
So would it be feasible to make up that difference over the balance of the 12 and a half acres?
It would be because that actually wouldn't be part of the, you still have 13 and a half acres at 20 that we still would be producing. So that's where the challenge comes in. You still have the 13 and a half at 20. And so that's where the need to raise that number, because even though you may be able to, and again, this is strictly if you have a project that comes in just for that portion that's lower than 20 units per acre, whether it's eight or 15 or 19, you have to make that up. And if it's not part of a larger project, we have to have some flexibility to be able to increase the maximum number from the 270 to be compliant with our housing element.
Commissioner Hanson.
This is probably a question that'll have to also be discussed at council because a lot of deliberation went into coming up with the 270 unit number. But if you go later in our packet, the environmental analysis did cover for, I think you said, 364 units. My additional question, though, is about the density bonus. You know, presumably if we get another application with this new plan, there would be affordable housing in it. And if there were enough affordable housing, they would automatically qualify for the density bonus. So then, you know, if the cap was raised from 270 to, say, 320 or some number like that, the density bonus could be 35% on top of 320, right, instead of 270, whatever number was proposed.
That's correct. I think the potential limitation here is that if we're talking, let's, you know, an acre or two acres, we're talking about a fairly small amount of units at that density. So it probably doesn't get up near that point, but it could get there depending on the layout. I mean, someone came in and wanted to do more than just the 50 feet of cottage cluster at eight units per acre, then again, you just start eating into that property that could be used as the 20 units per acre and you may end up with the option or the need to have a project that is at a higher density than 20 units per acre.
So increasing the units will increase the traffic and the school impacts?
Not above, as long as it doesn't go above 364. And you can't take the density bonus units into account from the environmental perspective. So that's, so there is a possibility there to make that happen depending on the number of acres that are developed ultimately at less than 20 units per acre.
We did talk in the General Plan Committee, and it's in one of the tables, that we, the total number would be not more than like 50 units. But nonetheless, that could, as you said, Chair Badami, generate additional traffic because we still have to produce the additional 270 units as guaranteed by our housing element at 13.5 tenths 20. So again, I think that the balance is meeting the needs of the community and having some lower density and lower intensity in the Lark District versus adding more units total.
And I think just for the commission, with this, as with all of these, we're going to have some good discussion and there's going to be a lot of good input. I think the bottom line is whether or not, in general, this type of suggestion is something that the Planning Commission ultimately feels should be recommended and move forward to the council as part of their recommendation. And then we, as you stated before, we're going to have the same conversation. We'll get more information and provide that to the council as well.
Any further discussion on studying the maximum density for residential units in the perimeter overlay zone along the Lark Avenue to eight units per acre? Would anybody else like to comment on that? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I assume that the end goal on the total acreage is not to exceed that which we had, is now in litigation. So if we're not careful, we could find ourselves with a greater number than we're now complaining about.
Exactly.
And it does seem to me odd if we take a specific plan that we threw out and adopt a new specific plan that is worse than the original specific plan, that probably wouldn't be progress.
Well, I can tell you that I am not in favor of this particular proposal. Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, and just to bring back some of the discussion in the General Plan Committee, I think this was a trade-off. This was not, there was not an assumption that this would automatically bump this up to a higher number of units across the entire area because already in what we've seen, there are some units that are denser, some areas that are denser than others. And what we're saying with this recommendation is that this particular zone, which is on Lark Avenue, is not very well suited to residential. And we would not want to see dense residential along this particular road. So it was a trade-off, I understand, but I think at least myself, I would say that I would be supportive of not having as much density on Lark Avenue. So we may not come to consensus, but that was my sense.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I'm, it took a long time to get to where we were with the specific plan because it was an awful lot of input over a number of years. And there were a number of people who helped us to get there. And now I find we're going back and I think that will involve a lot of effort, which is good. However, again, I'm a little concerned about our scheduling. But one of the things the original specific plan had, not because of the plan, but just because of luck, we had a group of three, what I'll call developers, who told us how they would implement the specific plan. That is, they had, I forget what is, they had everything but the north part of the property, I think, under contract or at least under control. The last portion of the property, the northerly portion, they had no control over. We don't, we're not privy to whatever their dealings were, but I was given to understand they did not have control over that. However, if we didn't have that circumstance and we simply said, here's the specific plan, I assume a number of developers could come in and take a piece of it. So for example, on the 20 acres, somebody came in and said, I'll take five of those. And everybody said, fine, you're going to do exactly what it said. But I assumed that when you said, oh, now we need some roads, now we need some sewage, that the developer of five acres would say, fine, I'll pay my pro-rata share of the roads. And, but we'd say, but that's not going to do any good because now we got to wait for the other 15 acres to happen. And oh, by the way, the sewage won't work either because your five acres isn't going to pay for the sewage. So the new specific plan will be really good if we happen to have somebody comes in who wants to do that specific plan. So I guess what I'm concerned with, you can have the best specific plan in the world, but if you've got 10 people implementing it, I don't see how you're going to get the money to do the necessary things like roadways, sewers, utilities, everything that is paid for if you assume that a large portion of the property is developed at the same time. So I guess I would ask those who've been studying this now, what do you do with a specific plan that is being implemented over a period of years by multiple developers?
Would anybody like to comment on that?
Well, that's typically one of the implementation issues that's considered. And I think tonight, we're really focused on what is the language, if any changes were to occur, that the Planning Commission would want to recommend to the town council. There are a variety of implementation mechanisms. In some communities, they require whoever the first one is in to build upfront infrastructure and then they create a reimbursement mechanism so that way all subsequent developers pay their fair share of what the first developer did. So there's a variety of ways to do it, but I think for tonight, we need to kind of, we need to focus on what the council gave to the General Plan Committee that has now been forwarded to you. And I think this, and I don't know if you want motions or how you want to work this, but I think the first issue is really what, what's that character that you want to see on, in the perimeter zone, knowing that if we do allow for lower density, that it will have an implication on the total number. And so one way to regulate that is to cap how much of the small, the lower density product you want. So, because my sense is you don't want it open-ended, but you're going to want to have some control of how much low density so that way you know how much minimum 28, 20 units to the acre you absolutely have to have.
So the perimeter, the Lark perimeter is 50 feet and it's just along Lark. So there is also a 30-foot perimeter along both 17 and 85.
So those would not address the issues that have been raised of, as I recall, was the 300 feet or 100 meters? So it would be our plan to build the black lung units within 50 feet. Is that right?
That sounds right. Commissioner Erickson.
I was trying to figure out whether I was wise enough to answer Commissioner O'Donnell's question about plan implementation. And the only wisdom that I could come with is that Chapter Six in the specific plan addresses those issues either adequately or inadequately. But I would suggest to Commissioner O'Donnell, to what extent they address them adequately or inadequately, the General Plan Committee did not suggest any revisions to that approach. So there was no judgment that it was not okay, not okay. Not, I'm not suggesting whether it was adequate or inadequate, but just that the issue's generally been addressed and there was no impetus to make any revisions to that chapter coming out of the General Plan Committee. So I hope that's a sufficient answer.
One parting thing was that, I don't remember precisely, but I remember $12 million, that's a number that caught my attention. There was something like that, which as I understand, it was going to be spent upfront on sewage and roads and that kind of thing. And that was not a function of the specific plan as such. It was that the specific plan was going to be carried out in large measure in one fell swoop. What we're doing now is saying we would come up with a specific plan that could be done in any, any sizes. You take, you know, you buy two acres, you do two acres worth. And the concept of having the two-acre guy put up the $12 million bucks would probably be rather difficult, so.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I would just maybe amplify what Commissioner Erickson said. And if I recall, in the work in putting together the specific plan, the phasing came last. And so it's sort of, you know, you don't want the tail wagging the dog. So it seems as though, and in fact, you know, there were no changes recommended to the phasing section, I believe. And so there are phases that address some of the issues that Commissioner O'Donnell has raised in terms of organizing the work and the way it could be developed into phases. And those seem to be acceptable to several of the developers who either submitted applications or provided input to the process. Unless I'm mistaken, I don't know that there are things that we're proposing, particularly with regard to this item, of density in the perimeter zone that would significantly change that phasing plan. And I would look to staff to comment on that as to whether that would impact the phasing plan.
It would not.
Commissioner Hanson.
So in the interest of moving stuff along, I don't know, it doesn't seem that we're going to get agreement amongst the commission about this. And it, because it's a big issue, I think that, I think that, you know, my personal opinion is, I think it was a great idea to have the cottage cluster, which we'll get to in a bit, about not having to have a CUP for it. But if we got any proposals for that, we have to recognize that But if we got any proposals for that, we have to recognize that the density isn't likely to be at 20 dwelling units per acre, and that means we're going to have to have more units. And so I think we should pass that and put it on to council and just say, you know, although it's a good idea, that may not be a consequence that the town wants to take on, to, to take on whatever number of units, even if it was 30 or 40, you know, because as, as we heard, if there was a proposal for affordable housing, the density would apply to an even higher number. We may not want to go there in the interest of getting less intensity in the Lark District that way. There are some other ways we can accomplish it, maybe lower heights, and spreading the units across the different districts.
Thank you for those comments. With that, we're going to move on to number two, which is housing units should be spread across all three districts, which I agree with 100%. Commissioner Hanson, followed by Commissioner Erickson?
Um, we, I, I think everybody in the General Plan Committee agreed that that was a good idea. Where, at the very end, we were saying, well, how are we going to define what it is? So I, I think one of us just came out with the numbers that are in there. It's hard to know if they're the right numbers. The, the only thing that I noticed in, if you set it as the number of units won't exceed, I don't know how you do that in terms of phasing. Because if you have a cap of 270 units and they're not in the different, so I'm asking staff, the question is, how does that work with phasing?
So we divide the 270 across the districts, and so it would be first in, first approved. If they took, if they took up that whole allocation, then that would satisfy that requirement.
So it's actually going to be a, a number, then?
The percentage will translate into a number.
Right. So I did the math, it's 208 units in the Lark District, for example. And then if, if they get up to that number, then, then that's done.
Then there's no more residential in the Lark District, absent a specific plan amendment.
I mean, I, I couldn't think of a better way to write it. I, you know, when we talked about it at the General Plan Committee, we talked about some ranges and stuff. And so I, I kind of like the idea of the maximums. But I, it, it does actually translate into a number since we have a cap on the number of units.
Commissioner Erickson, and then followed by Commissioner Hudes?
So it seemed to me what happened, I think the people who participated in the development of the, of the specific, specific plan that's in place today, did it with good intentions. And so it seems like to me, part of what happened in the process of getting an application is that, and from the view of some people, we learned that potentially what we intended didn't realize. And that's in fact where some people had, so, had a, needed role aids or tums to kind of sort through that. So I was trying to figure out, okay, the, so the staff has suggested language that says 40% of the unit should be in the Lark District, 30% in the transition district, and 30% in the northern district, which translates to 108, 81, 81. If they all qualify for the density bonus, it translates to 146, 109, and 109. So I thought, okay, so let's say we adopt that language and it's in the plan. So if I'm a, if I'm a developer who is going to develop it, why, and because the sum of the percentages is 100%, we don't necessarily have to choose for them to, to total 100% because we're setting a maximum in each one. That's against a total maximum, okay? But because we chose 100%, I believe if I were the developer, essentially what happens is the maximum becomes the actual. Because I would never want to take the land and develop less than I was allowed to do. So if I'm the developers, either a single one or a collective group, and I were developing the, the Lark District first, I would go to the 40% and I'm going to leave the density bonus out for the moment because that, if I wanted to do the density bonus, I'd get there, but that doesn't have anything to do with it. And then if I were collectively or individually developing the transition district, why would I ever not develop it to the maximum I could do? And so therefore, it would play itself out, I believe, as the actuals, not just the maximums. And I'm not saying whether that's right or wrong, but I'm saying that my sense is, the reality of this would be that we're setting the actuals, we're not setting the maximums. And maybe that's okay, but I think we should just try to project how it would actually happen so that we don't have something occurring that we didn't. So everyone needs to be, so we might even just change the language to say, you get 108 units in the Lark District, 81 units in 81 units, because I think that's in reality how it would play itself out. Because I can't imagine owning the land and developing it for less than the maximum is. And so therefore, I, I, I don't know why it would ever materialize other than becoming just the actuals.
Commissioner O'Donnell, followed by Vice Chair Kane?
I guess I'm concerned a little bit about the concept of the density bonus. It was easier in times gone by because we had 50 or 49 units going in that would qualify for the density bonus. And those 49 units were on one piece of this property. Now, if you break it up into three, I doubt that you're going to have 49 units on one piece of property. On the other hand, we've heard from the town attorney, and I think he's correct, that to do something like a senior housing, you do have to have a concentration for many reasons. But we've said you can't have a concentration because we're going to divide it up three ways. And if you want the bonus, then you got to have this kind of qualifying housing on each of the three parcels, which means it won't work. The reason it won't, won't work is the, if you have to concentrate the people, if you get small enough, it just doesn't pencil out. If you have 10 seniors in one piece, and 10 seniors in another, and 30 seniors in another, I would imagine that is viewed differently by a developer as opposed to 50 units in one place. And you'll recall that we, the 50 units under the original specific plan, the objection was you needed an elevator to get to them. But then somebody said, well, you can't build it on the ground because it just won't happen. Now, maybe it's not our concern, what just won't happen. But I'll tell you one thing that probably also won't just happen, is if you divide it up so you no longer have a, a project you can put together with some numbers. Now, maybe I'm missing something. Maybe you could put 50 units on one of the smaller parcels. I don't know. But I do know also, as you narrow down to the north property, it is surrounded, I guess, on two sides, I think, by a freeway, which means the particulate matter and other matter is more acute when you have two freeways than when you have one. And I tell you, I'm a senior, I'm not sure I'd want to spend my declining, which I've started, my declining years surrounded by two particulate generating freeways. So it's really nice on paper. And I, you know, the one thing I'm really concerned about this whole process is, the other process took a long time because we were getting some real back and forth. There was somebody to talk to, is this doable or not doable? If we're going to talk to ourselves, we can come up with a really pretty plan. I, I don't think it'll go anywhere, but it'll really be pretty. And I think we can all take pride in it, and nothing will happen, and then we can all go home and feel good about it.
Commissioner Hanson?
I, I guess I'm, I, I heard what you said, I, I'm, I'm a little confused. If you take basically 270 units and you split them up 108, 81, and 81, or, was that the right number? Yeah. There's no reason somebody couldn't make a proposal similar to the phase one proposal that we saw that had, it just wouldn't have 320 units, it would have 180 or 190 units on it, and 50 of those could be for affordable housing. I don't, I guess I'm not understanding your question. I, I had more questions about the table, but I'll leave that aside for the moment.
Only way you can get the density bonus, if this goes to you, only way you can get the density bonus is you have to have the density qualifying additions, in this case, senior. So the guy that, guy or gal that buys three, or two, or one, one would think they might be interested in the density bonus. So if all of the density bonus goes to parcel one, then there's none of the density bonus left for parcel two and three. So I don't know, maybe it'll work. I, I don't know. But I guess what I'm saying is, the reason I feel, I feel this is difficult because the other process took so long. The only virtue of that was there was give and take, and you could find, you could talk about things. Here, the, the group of us who have no experience in what we're talking about, will draw up a plan and say, we like that. And, and we'll find out if it works.
Vice Chair Kane?
For members of the General Plan Committee or staff, if we spread the required units out over the three districts, which I'm in favor of, and if the hotel conference center was to be built in the north division, does the spreading of the housing eliminate the possibility of the hotel? Or does it then require that they be very dense and next door to each other? Have, have you looked ahead to see if both concepts, both ideas are compatible?
I see some nodding heads, but I'll, I'll jump in as well. So I think a lot of these conversations are providing flashbacks to the challenges we had, even just going through the first specific plan. There's a lot of moving parts here. Density bonus is, try to simplify, it's based on the number of units and the number of those units that are affordable at a certain level, whether that's senior or non-age restricted housing. So then they gets, depending on the percentage of that and the type, they get some level of density bonus up to 35 units. So it's based on the units. In the exercise that you're speaking of, has staff done a site planning exercise to look at a number of different configurations of what works and what doesn't? The answer to that is no. We would be relying on the development community to come forward, understanding the rules of our existing or amended specific plan, and then coming forward with the site plan for some, all portions of the specific plan area. And then we would evaluate that based on the specific plan in place at the time. And then the planning commission and/or council would make a determination on that.
So we don't know. If we spread the housing, whether or not that would preclude a desired commercial development or a desired hotel and conference center, we'd have to cross that bridge when we came to it?
We would. I think the base desire here is to spread the units. And again, I think someone brought up, you know, it was a suggestion of the General Plan Committee member, and so it's a good, as with all of this language, it's kind of the starting point language. There's other ways to do it. Maybe the percentages should be modified. And so if there's any direction in that regard, then we'd definitely be interested in hearing that. I think there frankly are just too many factors involved when you do have the number of different property owners. And that's frankly, as I've stated before, the whole point of doing a specific plan. So whether it's half of the site, whether it's a two-acre site within the specific plan area, they're all using the same rules. And so hopefully in the end, you come out with a cohesive plan that works.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hudes?
I, I share Commissioner O'Donnell's concerns about us talking to ourselves and not having the benefit of experts and, you know, I think that, and, and how that relates to us moving this very quickly. And I am concerned about that. And I would encourage staff to flag those areas where additional analysis or expertise would be valuable in bringing these recommendations forward. With regard to the, the spreading, some specifics about that, really, we talked about different methods of ensuring that housing was spread. One of them was particular numbers in a zone, particular percentage was discussed as well. I think I may have contributed the 40, 30, 30, and with very little thought, that in terms of whether those are the right numbers. And so, you know, I think that personally, I think the concept of spreading reflects the public input with regard to issues that were raised during the process, as well as specific comments from town council members. I believe, from my perspective, that the percentage method is a good one because it's a way to see kind of conceptually what this means in terms of impact when you see the, the percentage weight as compared to individual numbers. And it also allows recalculation when the, you know, if the total number does change. But I'm not comfortable with the 40, 30, 30 on the basis of my analysis because it was, it was really meant more as an example than specific numbers. And I would invite the opportu, this is where I would invite staff to confer with some experts on this. I think we have to take this thing seriously, you know? And I, I think that, that this is an example where it would be valuable to get that kind of input before moving it.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I guess two points. I, I don't, I would have to be educated on this. I don't know how much we paid for the expert advice we got over the seven or eight years we spent on the first specific plan versus how much we would. People are asking us, I think reasonably, the town ought to go out and hire some people. Well, that's all very interesting, but the town has a rather limited budget. And so I don't know how feasible that is. And I also don't know, therefore, how much did the developer pay for the experts in the past school round? Because there isn't anybody anymore that's, that's funding this for us. So that's just one question. Second, the second question is the 13 or 13.5 acres, I forget whether it's 13.5. If, if the first person that pulls down 10 acres or whatever says, I'm going to take, I've got 10 acres, I'm going to take three of those acres and make those 22 units per acre. The other ones, I'm going to do some other stuff with. We needed 13.5, and the first person only took whatever they took. Now you're going to count, I guess, you're going to count on the fact that you've still got enough land left that you can get your 13.5. But since you have no assurance as to when, if, if at all, that property will develop under this specific plan, is the state going to be satisfied that you've developed a portion of the property as 13.5, but not all of it?
Well, that's a, that's a great question. And I think the state, so long as they see that we have a specific plan where it still is feasible to get the 20 units per acre on the remaining acreage, and, you know, just looking at the map of the three districts, there's, there's quite a bit of opportunity. So I think we, we would have to be tracking. So the first one in would have the greatest flexibility because they would be the first application. The subsequent developers would probably have more restrictions because we're going to be under the gun to make sure we produce the density that we need to for, for our housing element. But there's still flexibility, for example, if, if there's an interest in doing some lower density product. But I think what we're trying to do is, what are the opportunities that we want to create? Hotels, residential living, retail? And are we creating those opportunities and spreading them where you want?
If you take 40 acres, which is the wrong number, but approximate, take 40 acres, and you take 13.5 and you subtract it, and you say, so long as I have 13.5 acres left, conceptually, I could satisfy the state. So the first person develops, they have none of this in it. The second person develops, they have none of this in it. Now, we know that the third person comes in and says, guess what? You've got at least 13.5 acres, and we're, we're essentially telling you what you're going to put on that property, right? So that, so we could say to the first person, forget about it, don't worry about it. Second person, same thing. As long as there's 13.5 acres left that this could apply to, we're, we're copasetic.
That's correct, in, in theory. So you're going to get to a point where, let's just use, there's only, there's zero units in the north 40, and there's only 12 acres left. At that point, we then have to go find another site to accommodate those units. And so that would be the exercise that we would go through. And so we would be, as Ms. Pravetti stated, tracking that. And if we got to the point where we were coming up on the next housing element cycle, you know, giving them our progress on the previous housing element, and we say, oh, by the way, there's no units in the north 40, and we haven't rezoned anything else, then we would have some challenges legally.
But we could not, as a town, in fairness, say to people, this, this burden should be shared over the acreage. So that's what people talked a little bit about. If the burden is, you got to have 13.5 acres at 20 units per acre. If the burden is, you've got to have 13.5 acres at 20 units per acre, we want to make sure that the first couple of developers aren't skating on that. So, do we turn them down if they don't have 22 acres on their first? Well, because again, I told you that a person can come in with two acres, the way we're doing this, I guess one acre. Clearly, it gets very interesting. The old plan had the just happenstance of, I guess, a developer, whereas now, there is no developer, and there's no reason why there couldn't be 30 developers over a period of years. So, but as we're the goalkeepers, at some point, could we say to somebody, "Wait a minute, we're now down to 13.5 acres, and we want to make sure that housing goes on that"?
Well, that would be a conversation we'd have. I don't know that we could require it. But at that point, if we get into a position, let's say, we have a development that doesn't have, meet the 13 and 1/2, and we haven't met it elsewhere in the specific plan, and they have a great commercial product, or project, or a hotel, or something that the town really desires, at that point, approving that project would necessitate the town rezoning something else.
And you think the state would sit there and let that happen?
Well, no. That's exactly what we would have to do, is we would have to then rezone Oka Road, or, you know, the Los Gatos Lodge, or some other property outside the north 40 because we did not meet our affordable housing, our density requirement on the north 40. And I would just add two more points. One is that even though we're going through this specific plan amendment process, we can't predict what size parcel the next developer might have. They might have, you know, it might be 30 acres, it might be 24 of the 44 acres. So, just because we're going through this exercise doesn't mean we're going to start seeing postage stamp applications. We might see some, but I would imagine that typically, when there is a specific plan, it's very attractive to a builder to try and accumulate property and assemble it so that way they can do a really nice design and have some nice internal controls for their own purposes. And then third, I just want to mention that we essentially have no budget for this effort. So, you are seeing your experts before you, such as they are. And I apologize if we're not able to answer all of your questions. So, you know, we don't have the economics that a developer would have. We wouldn't be able to run the financials as a developer could. But what you do have is expertise in planning and legal, et cetera. So, I think we're trying to craft a specific plan that can be implemented, that balances the need of our housing element with creating a great neighborhood for our town.
Commissioner Hanson.
I understand all the comments that you made, Commissioner O'Donnell. My question is, this is, isn't this more about whether they build commercial versus residential? Because if they build residential, since we have the cap of 270, and it has to be 13.5 times 20, we can't have any proposal that doesn't meet the requirement for any residential that isn't 20 dwelling units per acre. I mean, that's written in stone in our housing element. So, then the only question would be is if people came in and build commercial instead of residential? And there are limitations proposed on, for how much commercial could be in Lark, for instance. So, I, just off the top of my head, it seems like we have our bases covered, but, you know, I don't have the benefit of, you know, professional analysis. I'm just thinking about the things that I've heard, and it seems like, you know, we would be covered on that.
Nicely said.
All right. Well, we can have this discussion, and we're not going to come to an agreement or consensus on several items. Our next item is a table, which is 2.1, the permitted land uses. And that has to do with allowing different housing types throughout the districts. Would anyone like to comment on that? Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, I thought it was part of the same thing, but I guess it's a different section. We talked about, right now, I don't believe the cottage cluster unit, for example, is allowed in any district other than the Lark. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I don't have my plan open. So, I was trying to understand staff, why that was proposed, because if you kind of look at the, one thing we were trying to avoid in the General Plan Committee is that the vision and the, you know, guiding principles of the specific plan were to have the Lark District be more residential and adding more commercial as you kind of move towards the northern district. So, to me, that speaks to not offering all the same types of housing. And then on top of that, I don't think we had any discussion about removing the requirement that any housing in the northern district has to be on top of commercial. So, I don't know how you build townhouses and garden cluster homes and cottage cluster homes on top of commercial. So, if just help me if I miss something, I.
No, I don't think you've missed, I don't think you've missed anything. This is all under the guise of spreading the units across the districts. So, if you want to try to create the opportunity for someone to do residential where they may not have otherwise been allowed to do that, in your example, the northern district, yet clearly, you're not going to do cottage cluster on top of commercial in the northern district. But this is trying to illustrate that if you want to have the opportunity for residential units to be spread across all districts, then there's a couple of options. And this gets a little bit to Ms. Decker's comments of trying to follow when things are in multiple places. The reason is, we were trying to deal with that specific topic where it was. And so, then you may or may not have noticed that when it's repeated later in the document, the underline and red font turns to underline black font, and then the new portion of that is related to that specific section. So, the conversation here is, A, if there are some of these uses you don't think should be permitted, uses from a residential standpoint across all three districts, then we can do that. I think you run into the issue, because there was some conversation in this later on, as we go through the document, of, you know, whether or not there should be residential above commercial. There's, as with many of these, which will probably, as we're seeing, will happen tonight, we're not going to get any clear consensus, and there'll be varying opinions. So, we're just trying to throw out the options. Again, this is all really starting point language for conversation and discussion. And if you don't feel any of this is appropriate, then we're happy to forward that recommendation, move that on to the council, that's for sure.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I think it's true, and perhaps I'm reading something that wasn't there, but certainly it's true conceptually. We're not locked into making the north property have to have above retail. Because if we're now saying we're changing the rules, we're going to divide the housing up, we could say, you know, it's not reasonable if we're going to do that to say it all has to be above the retail. So, we could get rid of that and say that if you want to put it above retail, great, but if you don't, that's okay too. Because if we're going to say 30% or whatever of the housing is going to go in that, probably makes no sense to say that 30% has to be second-story and above kind of housing. And I don't think we're locked into that. So, unless somebody feels that we want to be locked into that, but I would suggest to you that we probably won't get the 30% ever built, at least under present circumstances, if you said it has to be second floor above retail. But the good news is, we're not stuck with that. We could decide it doesn't have to be. Now, we talked about in here that when it's close to some of the roadways, we said, yes, there it would have to be on the second story. But that's much more limited, and it was spread out better.
And in fact, if you jump ahead to page six, item number 11, shows a different version of the permitted land use that essentially would remove that restriction from the northern district, as you say. So, so these things are interrelated, as Joel was mentioning, and the public was observing. So, that's certainly for your consideration.
Commissioner Hudes.
So, I had a question to staff relating to the comments that we received from the public about locating residences away from freeways. Have we researched this at all? Are there either, you know, practical or accepted standards for this? Other municipalities been addressing this proactively? I'm sure it's an area that's changing, that's probably not static. But do we have any information about whether, you know, we should enforce the 300 that was presented? Or is there, what's staff's opinion on locating within proximity to freeways?
So, I don't have any information on other jurisdictions, Ms. Pravetti may. But as was also part of the materials that were presented by that, by Ms. Rolie, or Ms. Robinson, the EIR evaluated that. And that was based on requirements and thresholds that are adopted by the state, and then probably ultimately, barrier air quality management district. And so, that is the restriction. The initial, and I don't have it in front of me, but I think the initial, prior to 2015, when new air quality standards were going to go into place for vehicles or for diesel trucks, it was a larger setback. But after 2015, it was allowed to be moved down to the 50 feet. So, that meets the technical threshold, whether you think that more should be done as a matter of the information that's provided. That, I think that discussion also is further down in one of the other sections.
Okay. So, that's helpful. It does weigh in on these, on this table to some degree, this is where things are in or related. That's why it's helpful to have that information now, and I think we should discuss that in some more depth, you know, when we get to that point. But again, General Plan Committee did not propose, I believe, much adjustment to this table. And so, you know, so, and I wouldn't be in favor of, you know, having cottage clusters mixed with the more dense retail environment in the northern district. So, but again, I think this is a little bit of the tail wagging the dog. I think you start with, you know, what do the districts look like? What percentage of residential and commercial do they have? And then you work on the housing type that, you know, fits into that. So, I'm concerned that we're locking on to the numbers that I put out there without much analysis, and so, and then revising this table on that basis. And so, I'm concerned, and I would not be in favor necessarily of making changes to this table.
So, then what we're hearing, and actually, you know, from a staff perspective, if the goal is to spread the units, you know, whether it's, you know, 33%, 33%, 33%, that's one approach. But actually, given the vision statement for the Lark District, which has some language about primarily being residential, that lends itself to support a notion of 40%, something slightly higher in Lark compared to the others. So, while, while the commissioner may not have given it much thought, it actually suits the purpose and is consistent with the language that's already in the specific plan. So, that's why staff continue to promote that idea. I think, you know, when we were modifying the permitted land uses, all we're saying is that if you want to spread the units, then we probably need to create, you know, some options for additional housing types. So, if, for example, the commission says, "Well, we appreciate that, but for the transition zone in northern, cottage clusters is not appropriate, it's too low of a density, we're already going to be challenged if we do any of that anyway, so let's just keep that in Lark." That could be part of your recommendation. But I would say you might want to give consideration to townhomes or row houses in at least the northern district, just so that you have more flexibility, especially if we, if the commission, as we'll be discussing later, takes away the vertical mixed-use requirement where the housing has to be above commercial. Then, then you're really going to need, your developers are going to want to have more choice as to what product they could build to meet the housing objective.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I think we should not forget that the original specific plan had a different concept than what we're talking about. The tail end of the housing got to the northern district, that's why it was on the second floor. Most of the housing went on Lark, and the name of the transitional district tells us what it was. And that tells us it transitions into something that isn't housing. But now, we're saying, "Oh, it is housing because we're going to take 40%, which leaves 60%, and we're going to divide that equally, so it's 30, 30." So, the transitional district will be no different than the northern district. So, it really perhaps won't be transitional. Those things are just names, and they came from a different specific plan. So, I don't think we should be hung up on those. But if we're sincere about saying, "We want a significant number of houses on the north 40," then let's get rid of all the stuff that would be an impediment to that. And that would be building on the second story. I do think we have to take into consideration things we haven't, i.e., is there any problem with the dual freeways? How does it lay out? We're talking like land is just a shirt, you just cut it. We have, you know, we're not doing that. I don't know what it looks like down there, but I know in the past, where we spent seven or eight years, we said, "Oh, no, we're not putting a lot of housing down there." In fact, putting it on the second floor was almost like we're not putting any housing down there. Now, we're saying, "We don't have any background in this, we don't really know what we're doing, but it sure sounds nice if we spread the housing around." I agree, we should spread the housing around. But I, then I think we have to assess the new specific plan as a new specific plan and not try to jam things into the old specific plan. The one thing I think staff is worried about, and I, maybe I'm wrong, but we don't want to do something that says, "Wait a minute, now you have to do new environmental studies." And I agree with that. But I don't see why, if we can say, "We want 30% of the housing on the northern property," I don't see why that would trigger an environmental problem. I will say, traffic will be different. If you put 40% here, 30% here, and 30% here, the traffic pattern is going to be different. But I think we definitely don't want to defend the old names, the old nomenclature, the old idea of where we're going to put it. I think we should start with, "We're going to spread the housing over the whole thing." I think Commissioner Hudes is right, we just can't pull a number out of the air, which is kind of what we did, and I respect you for saying that. So, we've got to get to that. And I, you know, maybe we have to say a little bit more loose, maybe we say 40 to 50%. I don't have any numbers. But make it a little bit looser. And I think everybody has said, "Let's spread the housing," and I'm all for that. How we spread it and what percentage we spread it, we've got to get to. Okay, I'm sorry, I want to beat a dead horse, but let's remember, let's not lock ourselves into the old specific plan if we're going to make these substantial changes.
Commissioner Hanson.
Just having heard the discussion, I think we haven't discussed it, but I mean, I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell. If we're going to go to this direction, I think we have to consider removing the requirement for having residential or commercial in the northern district. I mean, because you have to offer enough flexibility to potential developers. And further, I agree with our town manager's comments. I would probably just think about this table, with the exception of the cottage cluster units, as at least a starting point, without the cottage cluster in transition in northern district, as a starting point of trying to have a flexible enough system that fits within the existing plan. But we might want to think about the numbers again, because the one problem with the 40, 30, 30 is, although it does make it fairly even, it doesn't, it does make the transition in the northern district basically equal from that perspective. I mean, there isn't anything that's going to make one versus different than the other. Because we have to look at the commercial uses, but I think it's not going to be that much different.
Commissioner Erickson.
So, to Commissioner O'Donnell's point, I raised the question, as Ms. Pravetti and Mr. Paulson know, at the end of the second General Plan Committee meeting about if, in fact, we're intending to significantly change the nature of the plan, then we might need to rethink the concept of the districts. And that wasn't greeted with any applause by the other members of the General Plan Committee. So, I took that, including either of the council members who are on it. And I assume Mr. Paulson was professional enough not to really cheer when they did that, since it involved a significant amount of work on his staff. That being said, my sense is, and I know from talking with Commissioner Hudes, that he did in fact use them as examples, not as what he was suggesting. Now, if I assume that we're going to maintain the district descriptions in general from them, then I might suggest the first number should probably, that the number, the percentage difference between percentage difference between the Lark District and the Northern District should be greater than 10%. It should be greater than 10%. So for the sake of making the same error that Commissioner Hudes made, I might suggest that the first number for the Lark District, if it's intended to be, and if you look at the language in the Lark District, that it's intended to be, although, I'm going to use my language, not what's in there, but heavily or primarily residential, the number should probably be at least 50%, at least 50% as the, as, in, in that area. And so that would suggest to me, if it's, if there's not supposed to be as much residential in the Northern District, that it needs to shrink down some. So maybe make it half of what it was. So it might, maybe something like, and, and I'm talking about conceptual numbers, but also getting close to actual numbers. So you might have 50% and 25%. And then I do think the sum of the percentages, whatever they end up being, should be, in fact, greater than 100%. Because if not, we are literally, I believe, from a developer's standpoint, we will just be prescribing what it is, and we will take some flexibility away, so that, and we would need to figure out what the language is that says, the maximum is against these percentages, but the total can't exceed. I don't know how, how you, how you write that language, but we, but you do that, we do that with the square footage of, of commercial space and other square footages where the sum of the parts is, is greater than the total that's allowed. So I assume there's a way to do that. Because then we provide some flexibility as we move through the process, or as it's not, I mean, we're, we shouldn't assume, just because we got an application, in the first time we got an application, that started in the Lark District, that if, in fact, the town prevails in the existing litigation, that the first application that we would get with a new specific plan would necessarily start in the Lark District. We shouldn't assume that, because it might not. It might start in the Northern District, or it might start in the transition, it might start most anyplace. So we shouldn't assume that. So we would need the flexibility to allow, maybe, maybe it starts in the transition district, so what, we'd need the flexibility to allow that to be maybe 40% of the housing or some other, some other thing, because we might have someone who would come into the transition district and take 10 acres and develop it at 20 units per acre, or something. So we, we don't, we don't know. So we, it seems like if that sum of the percentages is exactly 100%, it becomes prescriptive and takes away flexibility that might serve the town and enable developers to be more responsive to us.
Commissioner Hudes.
Yeah, I would agree with both points that, that I picked up out of many that Commissioner Erickson raised. One being to put a mechanism for flexibility in there, and if we think that, that one way to do that would be to have, you know, an, an up to percentage number that was greater than added up to 100% in total, that might be one way to do it, and I'd be supportive of that. Also, you know, on reflection, it, it makes sense to be consistent with the language that's been written for the different districts, and so, you know, something that reflects potentially a higher percentage in the Lark District would make sense to me as well.
All this is necessary. You people have gone through it on, on your committee, and I have not, so bear with me for a minute. I don't know how we stay with the original concept, because the original concept was housing transitional, basically non-housing. And there's a consensus of opinion that the only way you can kind of take care of some of these problems is to make it better spreading across the property. And nobody's disagreeing with that. But that will change what the original concept was. And I think we ought to just say that. I, it doesn't do any good to say, well, we're going to stay with the original concept, we're just going to change everything. So I, I agree that more than half of it, perhaps, or half or more, can stay down with the Lark, because that just made, made sense for many reasons. And then the question simply becomes, well, how much do you put on what we call transitional versus how much you put on North? And I don't know, and maybe we don't have to know. We can say there's 50% less. We want to make sure that at least X percent of that goes on each, because that, otherwise it wouldn't be spreading. But there might be some flexibility, and I think that's what has been said now twice, so that at the end of the day, there'd be more housing, for example, on the Northern than there might be on the transitional. We don't know, it depends, people come in. But, and this is Commissioner Erickson's point, you started with more than 100%, but at the end of the day, you can't have more than 100%. But you didn't know that going in, but you will certainly know it coming out. And at some point, a developer's going to say, whoops, now I know where we are on this last piece. So, but I, I don't want us to fall into this concept of somehow we're keeping the old plan, because we aren't. Unless we say, well, it is true that Lark is going to be primarily residential. That I would agree with. I don't know what we say as to transitional and northerly. Because it, northerly is now a heck of a lot more residential than it was to start with. We had said before, it's not going to be primarily housing. Now it's going to be, could be as much as 25% of the total number as housing. That's a lot of housing compared to the transitional, which also might be 25. Or northerly could be 40, or 30%, let's say, versus 20%.
All right, I'm going to interrupt here, because I'd like the town manager to address this.
Well, I think this is a really valuable conversation, because I think it's kind of getting to the fundamental point about what, what is our responsibility, what, what's being asked of us this evening and at subsequent hearings as we consider amendments to the plan. So we were given some boundaries by the council when they first started this back in September. They said, you know, try and identify specific changes to the plan that address the concerns that were raised during the first application, so that we can have better certainty that the next time an applicant picks up the plan, that they will know what it is the town wants, and will be able to provide an application that meets that. Then they said, work within the parameters of our existing environmental impact report, our existing housing element, and we're not doing a total rewrite of the specific plan. And he's about to take those peanut M&amp;M's. And, and so we're not doing a, a total rewrite. So I think our, the delicate line we're trying to find is how do we do something like spread the housing across three distinct areas that have been defined as land use districts in a way that maintains the integrity of this notion of three districts? And I think with, the basis of this conversation is saying that the 40-30-30 might have been a good starting point, but that's inherently inconsistent with the notion. So I think you've convinced us, both Joel and I have moved off the 40-30-30, and whether it's 50-30-20, or up to 60-20, 30, you know, some other range, the point has been made, and, and that's been very valuable. I think as we, as we continue to move forward, we're going to have to do that, the, the additional work of really going word by word and seeing, you know, is this, this is a transitional district because it provides a certain mix of uses. And the Northern District has also a mix of uses, but may have a different balance of what that mix is. It might have more commercial, office, retail than housing, but it will still have housing. So have we met that objective of spreading the unit? So it will take some finesse, but I think we have not been asked to do a new specific plan.
Commissioner O'Donnell, followed by Commissioner Hanson.
I don't know where we're going now, maybe we, maybe we're going to wait for some further work. I, I don't know where we're going. But I, I believe this exercise is to attempt to address the concerns of our citizens who are not happy with the original plan. So I think we have to do more than tinker with the location of the, of the density. Because if all we're going to do is to say, you, we could add 335 units, and we're going to spread those 335 units over the whole property rather than part of it, aren't you all happy now? You're not just going to mean, no, we're not all happy now. So I think we have to decide a little bit about, what do we have to do besides, you know, part of the real objections were look and feel and things like that, which are going to be very, very difficult. I really think this housing thing, when, I think we've essentially been told, you want to spread that around, we can do that. And I think we can come up with better concepts on how to do that. I honestly don't think that's going to be as big a problem as the other problems, which are, the problems are, what were people really unhappy with? And if you had to summarize it, it would be look and feel. Now, you still have a question of, can we ever satisfy people on look and feel? And I don't know the answer to that, but we can certainly try. So we're going to get to that, I assume, but that's really going to be where, where this is.
Commissioner Hanson.
So with respect to the comments that, that our town manager and Commissioner O'Donnell just made, I, as you're talking, I, the one thing, we haven't talked about the commercials yet, but as it stands, there's a proposal to put in, in addition to the total limits on numbers of square footage, the potential of putting limits on percentage of square footage in each district. And so if you look at the mix of it, I, I don't think you, we're necessarily having to throw out the intent of the plan. If it turns out that it's accepted that, that there's going to be more, higher percentage of commercial in the Northern District and the least percentage in Lark, and then you kind of do that, a little bit of the opposite on the residential. I don't think it completely changes the intent of the district, so we, we'll have to look at the total picture, but it, it seems like we're not, we're not that far off. Although I did agree with, when I first looked at this, with the percentage thing, I did have the same concern that Commissioner Erickson did, which is if you don't have more than 100%, we might not get what we need, and so we might want to change those percentages.
Vice Chair Kane.
I have an asset and a liability. The liability is, I wasn't in on the ground floor, and I don't serve on GPC. The asset is, I wasn't in on the ground floor, and I don't serve on GPC. I, I think the closer you are to this, the more you can beat it to death. And I'm listening, and I'm listening, and I'm learning, and I'm, you know, no offense, guys, I love all of you. You know, God so loved mankind that she did not send a committee. Town council wants us to give guidance on what we've heard from the people, from the hundreds and hundreds of letters that we've received, and we know what those are. I would say that, that you've, you've, we've gotten to a point where, on 2.51 maximum development, clearly there needs to be, to be some flexibility. And there needs to be a fundamental concept, the majority of houses, or larger number of houses, needs to go into Lark. So that means you've got X, and then you've got smaller numbers in the other two. You know, off the top of my head, I, I've always seen, and I, I am stuck on the old version, Tom mentally, that the middle ground was, was going to be commercial, and the Northern ground was going to be don't know. And what I'm thinking of the Northern ground is what I've heard from, from the people, and certainly it, it meets my opinion, that's, that's a place for a hotel and a conference center. And so we, we say to council, this might be a workable idea, and there's the flexibility to do whatever numbers need to be done to get to the, to the 270, or the other number with the housing bonus. And what we've done on, on 2.1 is, again, a whole bunch of flexibility. Now, with conflicts with 2.1, we can discuss that later, I don't understand, one of them says Northern District is above commercial, the other one says Los Gadas Boulevard. But whatever it is, it gives support to the idea of flexibility. And, and that's, I think, what council needs to know. What we think we've heard from the people, and what we think we think. And then they, they can take it from there and give it back to the experts to do the actual language.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I, I just think we're beating these guys to death, and we need to make, make recommendations, common sense that we heard.
All right, Commissioner Hudes, and then after that, we are going to take a break.
I, I would just add that I agree with the town manager's proposal on how to handle this, and I think it's adequate in terms of addressing the public's needs and responsive to the council. I personally am not very good at getting into philosophical discussions about, is this new, is this a change? For me, I'm going to take these one at a time, and I think that this is within the direction that we were given by the council, and I also think it's within the direction that we were given by the public.
All right, with that, we're going to take a 10-minute break. The meeting has resumed, and Vice Chair Kane would like to make some comments.
Well, I just want to clarify my, my ending remarks. I've, I've read the verbatim minutes of both the GPC meetings, and I think they are absolutely outstanding. I, I mentioned to somebody, I don't know why we didn't do this in the first place, but that's very complicated, and I wasn't here. I've also read the Exhibit 9, and all the letters from all the public, and I think Exhibit 9's got it right. We can, we can tweak it here and there, but council wants guidance on what we think, and what we think we've heard from, from the town people, and I think it's all here. If you read those minutes of the GPC, and you read Exhibit 9, it's 90% all here, there's a great document. And I think we should accelerate our progress, maybe even take a null hypothesis approach to what is wrong, what doesn't work with Exhibit 9. And I haven't found a lot of fault with it, but again, I haven't spent as much time as the GPC committee members have. But I'm, I'm not speaking for, for the commission, I'm speaking for me, and I'm, I'm advising council that I think this is a great document, I think it's mostly here, it is vastly improved, and that's the message they ought to get. And then, give it to Mr. Paulson, who's got the expertise to work out these kinks to the degree he can with, with the resources at his disposal. And that's going to be a, you know, we're not expediting, we're giving Joel the three months he needs to put this all together. So that's what I think. I think we can run into the temptation of beating it to death, or, or take the, you know, we can go through it, but take the position that this is a really good document, GPC did a great job, and I think the people are consistent with what's here, because it's in their letters, and that's what council needs to know. And then Mr. Paulson needs to get on with his job.
Commissioner Erickson.
So based on Commissioner Kane's comments, I think Mr. Paulson should ask the town manager for a raise.
I agree.
I agree.
And, and additional staffing, but he says he has no budget, so we're stuck.
I'm going to call a question. All, all in favor?
Of the raise?
Yeah. All right. We need to move along, and hopefully we can do it quicker, and some of these items might be easier. So we are on item number three, about the vision of how we're spreading these units to make it fit with other uses and fit in the neighborhood idea. So 2.7.3 talks about guiding future residential development that reflects the traditional character of existing residential architecture. Comments? Vice Chair Kane.
Well, Commissioner O'Donnell has mentioned a couple of times that, that the riding factor in, in the issue is the look and feel of Los Gadas. And now council has heard that again, I think that is a key issue. Given our housing requirements, that is a challenge. But we did have a gentleman here who gave us 85 pictures last time, and maybe they could be included as a document or supplemented by work of our own, to give the developer a better idea of what it is that we're looking for, what it is we think the people want and need.
Commissioner Hanson.
I'm going to really cook, I, I wrote down two words when I read that, and it was, I said, good idea.
All right, Commissioner Hudes, followed by Commissioner O'Donnell.
I agree, I think it's a good idea, that was my reaction. I also appreciated the language from Mr. Pacheco on this, but it's, I believe that wouldn't fit here, that that language might fit more appropriately somewhere else, and that goes into explaining a traditional character of existing residential architecture. And I didn't have time to take that comment and figure out where it goes, but I did want to say that I think that language will be a valuable addition to the plan, maybe not in this spot, but maybe somewhere else.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
The problem I have is, I've only lived here since 1972. When you look at the unit sizes, 500 feet, 500 square foot unit, pretty hard to get the look and feel of Los Gatos out of a 500 square foot unit. So I don't know. Look and feel, I remember what houses looked like in the Second World War, and they were pretty small, and, and that, maybe we're going back to the Second World War construction. Again, I don't know that that's the look and feel of Los Gatos. So I think we have more of a problem, because if we make the units smaller, the concept of look and feel will be, it can be done, I think. But I think it'll be a question of how do we do it? I think it would be easier to do it, for example, with a cottage cluster, than it might be with townhomes, but perhaps not with row homes. Now, we don't have, we don't have anybody helping us, like an architect or something, but when I just sit here and say, how many 500 square foot houses do you know in town? How many 500 square foot anything do you have in town? And so look and feel, it's going to be a trick, it could happen, I guess, but I just don't think it's a gimme. And that's, therefore, I think what we're doing here, going over it by item by item, is necessary. I think Joel did a wonderful job, but the whole point of everybody is so we can add our thoughts, and we can take them into consideration. I am, I'm as troubled by look and feel today as I was on the original, because that's a very amorphous concept. And hopefully, we can come up with something that will be clearer, because if I were going to try to interpret look and feel, my interpretation, I guarantee, would be different than somebody else's. So I don't know what we do about that, but perhaps by going over all this, we can, if there's anything we can do which is helpful, it would be, help the council know how to talk about look and feel in a way that somebody could be guided by it. I'm not guided by the concept of look and feel, because I have a view of what Los Gatos, parts of Los Gatos look like, and other parts don't. So hopefully, we'll be able to help on look and feel.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but there are a lot of images in the document, and actually, I think is, maybe for homework, if I could be so bold, there might be some images that you feel, you know, maybe they really don't belong in the specific plan, they're too boxy, they don't really represent the look and feel. So I think it would be, you know, of interest to know, you know, well, maybe some of these need to not be in the illustrative guidelines, because just, and we do have an architect on staff, so we have a professional who has expertise both in public and private sector to help us with this, but I, I think it would be really instructive to really look at the images in the plan, and say, you know, some of these have got to go, because they're really not, they're sending the wrong message.
One of the big problems before was the, the look and feel of large buildings. For example, not everything was going to be residential. And that was a very difficult concept, because if you're going to build a, I don't know, a 30-foot-high building that's going to be used for a commercial purpose, look and feel ends all over the lot. You can say, it should have looked like Lenardi, should have looked like Nob Hills, what should it look like? And those are typically not great architectural buildings, if I can be so bold. So as we get into this, we'll have to decide what the heck does look and feel mean. But I will do what you're suggesting, go back and look at the pictures.
Vice Chair Kane, followed by Commissioner Erickson?
Well, again, the flexibility is, is what's important. Four says, require smaller, more affordable, yes. Five says, allow smaller units from nine to 15. I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell. Is 500 a practical, but again, it's a range. And so if there was a studio, somebody wrote a letter about people looking for a small studio for, as a starter, well, 500 is really, really small, I don't know if that's practical. But we give council a range, and we make the point. We want them smaller, we want them, some of them smaller, we want some of them more affordable. And if you want to start at 500, that's fine. If you want to start at 900, that's fine. But we're giving them the flexibility, because that's what people have asked for. And so I'm okay with four, five, and six, just, just for openers. Oh, and seven, if we can do it. Can we apply BNP to all of the land, or is there a limit on that?
So the, the guidelines from the BNP ordinance do apply to the, right, it's already in the specific plan?
I'm okay with that one, too. Like I said, I think they did a great job.
Commissioner Erickson?
So the language itself, that was suggested by the staff, in my opinion, doesn't add any greater clarity, it just adds some other words. So, because I see the, that, it provides more words to debate, that's what I think it provides, that, not necessarily meant as a criticism, just as an observation. So I would suggest, actually, because I think the architecture, in the residential architecture in the town, is eclectic throughout the town, because the neighborhoods in the town were developed over three centuries. So, so they're eclectic. So I think there's no harm in the language which was added, but this, well, I was, the, what I wrote down in my notes coming was, as illustrated in, which is where exactly the town manager was going. So I think there's no harm in that language, unless it's just left by itself, because that, all it does by adding it is allow more debate. But then I would say, as illustrated in, and then how many, whatever we mean by this language, we've illustrated it then, and then we can say, hmm. So a developer comes, they give us a picture of a building, we can say, hmm, doesn't look like any of these pictures. Apparently, it isn't part of the, doesn't reflect the traditional character of existing residential architecture in Los Gatos. But now we don't, we don't have any basis upon which to do that.
Vice Chair Kane?
I agree with, I agree with that completely, and I meant to put that in my remarks, that I don't see it here, but it ought to be added, that we've included an addendum of all of the pictures that you referenced, and your idea about what doesn't look right is perfect. I used to play that game, and say, what don't belong in this picture? And I could do that, you know, this one's out, that one's out. But it wouldn't hurt if we just got a rough consensus and attached those pictures, not only from the book, but from anywhere else. Pacheco's probably got 100 of them.
Commissioner Hanson?
I think the one thing we have to be careful of is that the, the, so much of the housing element is in the North Forty, and with the requirement to do 20 dwelling units per acre, I think something like 80% of the housing that we have in town is single-family homes, and there are, there, there's going to be a max of 40 cottage cluster homes, if, if that ever even gets built in the North Forty. And so then, then that kind of automatically speaks to the issue of, it's not going to look and feel like what's across the street, because what's across the street, you know, in the neighborhood, you know, across Lark is, is single-family homes. And so it seems like the best way we can address this is, since we've gone down this path, and that's, we know what the town has committed to do, is to look at the architecture and try and make the, make it architecture as much the same, or give examples of other things where it has 20 dwelling units per acre that we already have in Los Gatos, if, if we think that's look and feel. But I mean, it's never, I, I, it, that's an elusive goal, given the, you know, the requirements of the plan and the housing element.
Right. And I would, I would just add that most of the housing, if not all, in the specific plan, is really intended to be multifamily, multi-unit. So you wouldn't see a 500-square-foot home all by itself, it would be within a larger complex. And some of the architectural photos show, you know, two-story buildings, multi-story buildings with architectural elements that reflect look and feel. So it, it would be a different housing type, but the architectural themes might be similar to what you've seen in, in our eclectic neighborhoods.
What page and chapter are you in?
Oh, I was just on page 2-28, 2-29, just, just, just for images.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I mean, I had hoped that maybe we could come up with do's and don'ts, as we've done in, in Hillside and things like that. And I'm, I'm losing hope that that's going to be possible to do that, given the, the variety of housing types, and given the need and the concentration of multifamily that we have here. And each time I read this suggestion from Mr. Pacheco, I get more and more out of it. And I think that there's a lot of merit in, in taking a really good look at including this and referencing this, because it gives some guidelines that are, I think, do a better job of, of kind of conveying the I know it when I see it, than trying to come up with specific do's and don'ts. And so I just want to convey that I'm very enthusiastic about these four points of design excellence and benchmarks that I believe could be used. They're more objective, certainly, than what's in there now, but they are not so specific that it would be, you know, difficult, I think, for someone to work with.
Commissioner Erickson?
I guess I'm not as concerned as Commissioner Hanson is about this, because my sense is, architectural style can be applied to single-family, multifamily, et cetera. So the question is really not, is about architectural style, and how elements of that, of a particular style are used. So that, so to the extent that we could, could articulate well, either with pictures or in language, that certain architectural styles are what we, how we define this, how we define the like and, like and feel. I mean, I don't, I'm not an architect. So to the extent that we could define those, identify ones that are maybe even predominantly, predominant in the town, or something, that would reflect and so forth, then they, then you have a better, you have a clearer definition of what it is, because they can span multifamily and all kinds of styles of housing.
Vice Chair Kane?
I was just wondering if we could get a consensus on Commissioner Hudes's suggestion that we underscore, highlight, or incorporate the letter from Len Pacheco and the four points. I, I think everyone knows, Len has served as chairperson of the Historic Preservation Committee since, since Fremont wrote in, and he knows a great deal about architecture and these points. And I agree with Commissioner Hudes, and then we pass that on to the town council.
I would agree in passing those comments to the town council. And I'm seeing a knot of heads from everyone. All right. I think we have some consensus on that, we are making progress. All right. The smaller, affordable units, we have the chart, are we all in consensus with that? The range starting at 500 square feet to a 1,200 square feet?
Only insofar as it gives them flexibility, but I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell, it may not be practical, but it's, it's flexible, it's there.
Okay. All right. On page four, it talks about new residential should be a maximum of 345,000 gross square feet for cottage cluster, garden cluster, townhome and row house products, and 207,000 net square feet for condos, multifamily apartments, and affordable products. Any comments on that? Vice Chair Kane?
Well, it's the old thing about giving a number. It's nice to say they're not maximums, their maximum's not a goal, but that'll be taken as a target sometimes. I would just say something like, these are maximums and shall not be exceeded. But, you know, the numbers themselves have been reduced, so I think that communicates the desire for it to be smaller.
Okay.
I would support that.
All right. It appears we have consensus on that, so I'm going to move to the next one, where we've got some redlining, and that would be, don't allow residential on Los Gatos Boulevard. And it talks about the perimeter overlay zone, that residential is only allowed when located above commercial along Los Gatos Boulevard. Do we have comments on that? Vice Chair Kane?
Well, there were the two units on, on LGB near the gas station that Commissioner Erickson brought up, and that I brought up, and they just seemed to be like sore thumbs out of place. So I would support the revision and the, and the red underline. Elsewhere talks about, I think it was, I'm guessing it was 27 and 28, that they come out for a variety of reasons, and when we get to that, I would support that as well.
Commissioner Hudes?
I, I agree with that concept about eliminating it. I think the wording, I would suggest rewording it to be residential, is, residential on Los Gatos Boulevard is only allowed when located above commercial, rather than the way it's worded now.
All right. Do we have a consensus on that? Would anybody like to add a comment to the contrary? Commissioner Erickson?
Not to the contrary.
Okay.
But I was, but I was going to suggest, one was trying to, my, my sense is, this was trying to solve the problem that Commissioner Kane was talking about. So I would suggest that, would have suggested that parks be also allowed facing Los Gatos Boulevard, which is another way to, to have a consistency of facing the Boulevard, that could be actually accessed from the interior and the, by the, from the interior and the exterior. So the problem with, one of the problems with commercial, if, and the location that was of concern, is it's challenging to, to access it off of the Boulevard, and doesn't make sense from a development standpoint to access it from the interior. That's the real challenge, generally. So to put parks or additional green space on the Boulevard would seem like to me to be another way to address the concern and have a consistency.
I would agree with that, Commissioner Erickson, and along with that, it would provide a buffer. Our next item is provide senior housing at the ground level, and there is wording that states, if age-restricted housing is proposed at grade accessible units and/or units that are assessed via elevator, ramps, and lifts are encouraged. Comments from commissioners? Commissioner Erickson?
I have great sensitivity to trying to write these kind of things, since I spent a lot of my career trying to write these kind of things. But this is, if, if I had written this, my staff would have told me, just go back to the drawing board, buddy, because what it says is, oh, you can have units on the ground floor, or you can have units above, and if you have units above, you have to give them access to it. So I'm not sure what this, if the direction is to put units on the ground floor, we should say that, we should eliminate the second half of the sentence. So in and of it, as it's written now, it doesn't serve any purpose, it seems like to me.
Don't take offense, Mr. Paulson, you still deserve a raise.
I'm glad it wasn't just me, I didn't understand it. Thank you.
All right. Comments, Commissioner Hudes?
I would, I haven't really processed what Commissioner Erickson said, in terms of should we only have it at grade level. I am simply suggesting a reword of this, if age-restricted housing is proposed, it should be accessible from grade elevator and ramp and/or lift.
How else would it be accessed?
Well, I, I'm just rewording a sentence that was...
By a broom.
All right. This seems like some minor tweaking, that I'm sure Mr. Paulson is highly capable of fixing. He has a heavy workload, so I don't...
Some other way would you add it, please?
All right. Vice Chair Kane, followed by Commissioner Hanson?
For the benefit of council, we've talked about seniors being on second and third floors, subject to the, to the tyranny of the elevator, and that, that grabs my imagination. That would be a terrible thing, but we also had expert testimony from a person whose employment was to put people up on the ninth floor, and it worked just fine. So maybe something I don't understand, this is not my expertise, I can get rid of the, the pictures in the movies of seniors being trapped, but I'd also be willing, have someone be willing to look into, do these things actually work? And I think the report we received was on the ninth floor, and it worked just fine. So, so again, some flexibility for council.
Commissioner Hanson?
I don't know if it's the wording or whatever, but I know when we discussed this in the general plan committee, I mean, we, we did talk about accommodating the needs of seniors. We also talked about disabled, you know, persons and accommodating their needs as well. And so I, I don't, do we have to specifically call out the population? I, I think we, we have unmet needs in our town that require grade accessible units, and so that should be accommodated, you know, by the housing that's built. You know, I don't know to what extent, I mean, but...
I would say to the extent possible, because council has advised this, that we can't get it. Now, there may be a gray area, or an asterisk or something, so council should be... be advised that if we can get it, that would be wonderful.
If "F" were omitted, what difference would it make? It doesn't say anything. I mean, we're all in favor of access, period. So what? You can't get in a house without access. So I mean, why do we have to say that?
Well, I think the question, the suggestion was provide senior housing at the ground level. And so...
But that's not what that says.
I guess we can just add, "Provide senior housing at the ground level," if that makes more comfortable.
Which I don't agree with, because we know it won't happen. Provide something you know won't happen, and you'll all be happy. I think the sentence doesn't add anything. If you want to say something, we can decide whether we ought to be saying, make it on ground level. I mean, you could say "if possible," but from what we've heard from everybody, if you say, "Put the senior housing on ground level," that's like saying, "But we're not having any senior housing," which I don't think is a good idea. So then I'm saying if that's true, and I'm not criticizing, I think the drafting is fine. I just don't know why we need it.
Commissioner...
Sorry. And so, and that simply could be, you know, that the planning commission doesn't think this is necessary and don't recommend this moves forward.
Commissioner Erickson?
So I guess my advice to the staff, you got, you've gotten a lot of observation about, "Oh, we should have senior housing on the ground level." What I would put in and take forward is if age-restricted housing is proposed, it should be grade level accessible is encouraged, and leave it at that. That's what you heard. Now, whether that's feasible or not is a different question. And then the council has to own the direction that they provided, and then decide whether or not they want to put something in, what you heard. So what I think you tried to do was sanitize the, what you had heard, which is like, okay, this seems like a screwy idea to say, "Put senior housing on ground level." And you tried to save people from themselves. I wouldn't try to save them from themselves on this issue. I'd just put it in there the way they provided you the direction and let them leave it if they want to, or let them take it out.
Okay. Good points. Unless there's further comments, we'll move on to what probably Vice Chair Kane would say, a sticky wiki, and that is consider the possibility of moving the houses away from Highway 17 and putting Commercial in that area. Comments from any commissioners? No sticky wiki? Vice Chair Kane?
I don't know what that means. Consider moving it where? Another five feet?
What, I think through the, on page six, there's, the 30 feet is what currently, can't have a building within 30 feet of a property line adjacent to a freeway. So the suggestion is that that be increased, and then not allowing residential in whatever that increase may be. And that was the suggestion that was carried forward.
So the increase then would be the increase of what you provided on the next page?
Correct.
Well, then maybe the next page ought to reflect the suggestion that we think it's too small. Because I mean, those two statements, you can read them together and say, "Oh, I guess it's 30 feet is what is moving it away from the freeway." But that's not your intention.
30 feet's what exists in the specific plan today. So whether or not that number should be increased.
Right. But I'm saying, we ought to link them then. I don't see them being linked, is all I'm saying. You know, the suggestion related to, where is it? I guess all I'm saying is, if what you're saying is, "No building shall be located within 30 feet of a property line," isn't that what you're saying, "Let's consider whether that 30 feet ought to be increased?"
Correct.
I guess if you say that, that's fine. Maybe that, maybe I'm misreading it.
So I think what we want to know is, is there another number based on the testimony that you've heard and reading the verbatim minutes, you know, given the narrow piece of land that we're dealing with, if 30 is too small, you've heard testimony about 100 feet, 330, so what...
We have state laws that provide, we have state laws that provide, as long as you take certain mitigation measures. For example, you have double-pane windows that are closed, and you have an air conditioner. They tell you how far you can do and get a building permit. Now, if somebody says, "Oh, I still don't like that," then that becomes much more subjective. So...
All right. Vice Chair Kane?
Tom said what I was going to say. Just go with the state law standards. I appreciate what Ms. Ann, somebody said about the 300 feet, 100 feet.
And Markeen Smith as well.
That's who I meant.
No, there's two people. Markeen Smith and Ann Robinson actually both spoke to that.
I empathize with both of them. But for this project, and given that it's narrow, and given that we want a whole lot of other things, I'd go with the state requirements.
Commissioner Erickson?
I couldn't support anything that wasn't already, I mean, this issue's been addressed in the environmental impact report and the mitigation measures, and so it seems like to me that's sufficient. And to impose some other, what would be somewhat arbitrary number, seems like to me not to be something that I would support.
We agree.
We agree.
Commissioner Hudes?
So I feel like there's a lack of information here, technical information, on this particular one. And, I mean, it wasn't only two people who raised this. There were a number of people that raised it in the hearings that we had earlier. I think it's a concern. I am not willing to throw a number out there. I am suggesting that we do a little more research and see whether there is a trend in this, whether this is an evolving area, and whether it's something that we should consider above and beyond what is contained in the environmental impact requirements. That's my personal opinion that we ought to see. To get a little more information on it, I feel like it's one that we don't have much on.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
We have an EIR that says it's fine. If what we're saying is we ought to redo the EIR, there are probably other things that would be interesting to look into. But we do have an EIR that considered the issue and laid it to rest. But if we want to reopen that, I guess the only question is, what does that do to our position that what we're doing here does not require an amendment to or revision to the EIR? I would personally just leave the EIR alone.
I'd like to leave the EIR alone, too. But the EIR also says that there's no problem with traffic. So I would agree with Commissioner Hudes that perhaps this is an area that does warrant further research. So I'm not quite sure we have consensus on this item. Commissioner Erickson?
So this is probably a question for Mr. Schultz. So given, if the, if the, if the town decided that it wanted to increase that number, don't worry about what, to increase it to what number, but to increase its number because they thought that was the right thing to do. Given that the environmental impact report has answered that question, could a developer challenge the fact that the town was imposing something that wasn't supported by the EIR?
So at this late night, yes, it could be challenged. So anytime you have, you've got your environmental document that said there's significant impacts, and to mitigate those impacts, there have been the double-pane windows, the air conditioning, all those things have been described to you that will mitigate that impact. So if you're going to pick a different buffer, you're going to have to have evidence that that, those mitigation measures weren't going to satisfy the impact, and that the additional buffer will do that for you, as opposed to, "I'm just going to, you know, choose a larger number because I don't want it close to the freeway." So you're going to have to do, if you were going to, if that was the direction, yes, we want additional buffer, we're going to have to do some evidence to support that additional requirement. The same as if you looked at traffic and wanted more to be done, we would need additional studies that there was, there was an impact that wasn't being reduced to less than significant, and this would also do that as opposed to just doing it.
Commissioner Hudes?
Given that input, I'm not advocating that we change the number. I am suggesting that we research and see whether, you know, other municipalities, there are many who probably are facing a similar issue, how they're addressing it. I don't know that we have that information before us tonight. That's all.
All right, we're going to move on to number 12, which is increasing the total number of residential units on the North Forty. This may have already been addressed. There's no redlining for us to talk about. Commissioner Hanson?
I think you're correct. It was related, and maybe staff would want to weigh in, but I think it was related to the possibility of the lowering the density in the large district.
All right. So I'm going to poll the commissioners right now. We're done with residential. So that's, we've made some progress tonight. So the next category would be Commercial, which I believe will also be lively. So we can continue on. We can call it a night and categorize it. Commissioner Hanson?
There was a couple of things that we didn't, that didn't, we discussed, but maybe they didn't make its way into the staff report, or maybe the General Plan Committee didn't really decide, you know, what to do with them. But I wanted to at least bring those up. They're related to residential, that's why I'm doing it.
Okay.
One was the subject of rental. The specific plan is silent about rental versus ownership. And, you know, I know we had the discussion about certainly encouraging some, a greater mix. And there was, in the Phase One proposal that we did receive for the others, you know, the current existing specific plan, there was a small amount of rental units. But I, and I just throw it out there, I don't know, like, since we're going through the change, is that something we would want to consider? And we did get testimony during the North Forty hearings that it was very unlikely that anyone would actually build a for-sale 500-square-foot, it would be, you know, a rental unit. And so I just wondered, should we keep the specific plan silent on this, or should we encourage to promote more affordability, encourage a greater amount of rental units? So I throw that out there. And then also the other one was the continuing care facilities as a permitted use. Although, is that commercial or residential? I mean, because they would be living there.
Commissioner Hudes?
Clarification question with regard to rental, regarding Commissioner Hanson's point. Is rental permitted for the senior affordable housing, if I recall, some of that was?
Yes.
Is that the only place that rental is permitted currently?
Well, it's not permitted, it was proposed. And so rental's permitted anywhere. We don't dictate ownership type.
And that's why you didn't see it in here, is because it wouldn't be appropriate for a town document to have a preference or encourage one tenure type over another. And then the continuing care, we, we have an idea of how that could be accommodated. So we just didn't, given our time constraints, weren't able to address all the comments that came. But when, when the committee, commission is ready to discuss that, we have an idea of how it can be incorporated into the specific plan.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I was just looking through my notes on the GPC residential, and I agree with Commissioner Hanson, that there was a desire to address continuing care as one of the uses that fits in residential, then we probably should come back to that when we get back together.
All right. Would we like to continue with that, or would we like to move on to Commercial and hope to tackle the CUP issue? Vice Chair Kane?
Well, the issue to me is, a break right now would be great. We've been at this for 45 of the past 48 hours. But what does that do to staff in terms of a calendar, a date certain? Does that put great stress on you? Should we plod forward on this, or can we come back to it on another day convenient to the calendar?
You can come back to it on another day. We would poll the planning commission to see what dates, a date in January for another special meeting, so we could continue this discussion. We're not bound, I believe, as Ms. Pravetti said earlier, we're not bound by that tentative schedule that we set when we first had this conversation with the council. So we would look for dates, poll the planning commission, and then come up with a special date and re-notice the hearing.
Then, Madam Chair, I would suggest we do that. Let staff get in touch with us with suggested dates and see if we can find one that works for all of us.
Okay, so...
If you all agree.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I would agree, because I think the next section may not lend itself exactly to a sequential process as much. So I think there would need to be some broader discussion first, I think.
Agreed. All right, and then we'll come back with continuing care and then the Commercial, at a later date to be determined. So with that, Mr. Paulson, do you have a report for us this evening?
Thanks, Commission, for working through this. Obviously, it's been a pretty busy week for you guys, with the hearing last night going along. I'd also like to thank Commissioner Erickson for his thoughtful service to the town on the Planning Commission for the last almost just shy of eight years. It's been a real pleasure working with Mr. Erickson since I've been here, and I just want to recognize him for the great service he has provided to the town.
So for Commission matters, I would like to turn to Commissioner O'Donnell for a special report.
Yes, I would just like to join in that. I've had the pleasure of serving with Charlie on this for essentially eight years, and I have done this even longer. And there are some people who really stand out in my roughly 14 years, I think, so far. And Charlie is one of those people. He has not only intelligence, intelligence in this valley is fortunately in good supply, but he has something which is not perhaps in such good supply, and that's wisdom. And his wisdom has been somewhat unique, unfortunately, and it's very helpful. And not only that, he has been a real pleasure to serve with. I wish he had simply told me, he was thinking about not being, not asking to be reapplied. He told me after the ship had left the dock, and I couldn't talk him out of it. So I personally will greatly miss seeing him here. Fortunately, I will see him elsewhere. I'm speaking for, hopefully you can correct me if I should be corrected. I think all of us will miss you, miss your counsel, miss your humor. We will miss your presence. So thank you very much, Charlie.
I will, I will second that. Did you want to give a speech?
No, I don't want to give a long speech. But, so it was just nice for five members of the council back eight years ago, or a little over eight years ago, to take a chance on appointing me to the Planning Commission. So it's been a pleasure to serve the citizens of the town and the council, because we all serve with the pleasure and support the council. It's been absolutely wonderful to work with the staff, as I think I've expressed to present members of the staff, and those who preceded them who are no longer members of the staff. And when I was a young man, I joined an organization, and when you join the organization, it takes a pledge that says, "When you become a member of this organization, your duty is to leave the organization not only not less than, but greater than when it was entrusted to you." So that's the ultimate stewardship responsibility. So I will let others judge whether the eight years that I stewarded a role on the Planning Commission, that I contributed to leaving it not only not less than, but greater than when the stewardship was entrusted to me.
Here, here. Happy holidays to all. This meeting's adjourned.